Who folks may know. And so why we're here and why I care and why everyone should care is that invasive species cause various sorts of harm. They're actually the second leading cause of global loss species diversity after direct habitat loss. So we aren't concerned, obviously, about moose or salmon going extinct in Alaska, but of course we are concerned about ecological disruption, you know, locally having impacts to salmon, moose, other values that all of us as Alaskans hold, you know, very near and dear to our hearts. So of course, you know, Alaska, we have very few invasive species. There are a few kind of popping up especially in Anchorage, other kind of urban areas, roadways. So we are starting to see some impacts, but it's really key to kind of catch and address these issues early before they start really impacting our natural areas. So the species that we're most concerned about are ones that on their own move from the urban environment out to natural areas where they say they are invading and then can take over, displace native species, and then start to really disrupt the ecosystems. So kind of since we're trying to prevent them from really from invading and taking over natural areas, it's really key that we address trailheads and kind of the front country communities like Girdwood. Obviously, this is a very much an outdoor recreation community, people your destination and people who live here, obviously, are going locally and all over the state to our natural areas. So we want to try to, you know, contain what's both what's in the community to prevent that spread to our natural areas. So this is the fifth year that my company and I have managed the effort. Prior to that, it was the Alaska Association of Conservation Districts. It was kind of a locally initiated effort by Johnny Lazarus about 10 years ago or so. And when they first started, they were they pull out truckloads and truckloads of white sweet clover from the airport. And so that kind of ongoing effort has really minimized and really contained the invasive species issues here in the valley. So yeah, kind of the metaphor I like for invasive species is a biological wildfire. And so just like a forest fire, you know, you want to prevent them whenever you can. Failing prevention, you want to catch it early and address it before it can blow up and get out of control and really, you know, just kind of run wild and do whatever they want. So when we when we look at invasive species, prevention, obviously, is kind of the first approach. Failing that, like with invasive plants, we'll look at manual control, hand pulling, mechanical control, so that's mowing or weed whacking. So we're doing quite a bit of that. Hope you might see Julie out this summer in town square pulling birdvets or with volunteers, pulling birdvets or white sweet clover. So our kind of our last kind of tool is chemical or herbicide control. But of course invasive species, they're also hard to kill. So sometimes there's a there's a common one like orange hotweed that's an issue here locally. And if you mow it, it actually stimulates its growth. It kind of upsets it and makes it grow faster. So it's counterproductive. So as far as projects we've done over the over the years, kind of one of our first ones was the Girdwood soccer field. Used to have a lot of reed canary grass that's that can invade and harm salmon habitat. So that's, I would say, 99% reduced. There might still be a blade or two of it out there, but it's mostly gone. A very effective project has been the Harlberg bike path. Used to have lots of birdvets spreading along it, kind of growing over the alder. And that's we sprayed that to 2017, and there's little to none out there now. Kind of a big project last year, not municipal property, but on the DOT right away, the Aliaska Bike Path. We treated that last summer. We'll do some follow-up work this summer. That was kind of invasive species hotspot last year, and it should be much better this year, and will be definitely a lot better by next year. We worked out the airport also last year in Crow Creek Road. And we had a couple of volunteer events in partnership with the Chugash National Forest. We also brought in a group of high school kids from Anchorage for some volunteer weed pulling here last summer. Kind of an exciting development is we working with Brian and Aliaska Resort. They have a big infestation of orange hotweed kind of just above the sit. So we'll be working with the resort to address that this summer. So I'm very excited about that as well. And so I think that's about it. I guess what the land use committee question came up about herbicide safety. Herbicides are they're I like the cliche, the right tool for the right job. So herbicides are very specialized chemicals to address plant chemical pathways. So they tend to disrupt photosynthesis, which obviously is humans and mammals we don't have. So they're very low risk to people, animals, fish, insects. And then my staff and I are biologists, so we're, you know, we're out there treating plant by plant. So very, you know, we're very careful with our applications. Yeah, trying to just treat the plants and nothing else. I think that's about it. I don't know if there are questions from the board.
Any questions from the board?
When will you be doing the follow-up along Aliaska Highway? When you did the grass last year, it was definitely noticeable as far as a non-beautification thing for a couple of weeks. And I know that there's still probably some vetch out there that you'll need to target this year. When is your timing?
That's a great question. Probably mid-July.
Okay.
Potentially late June, but most likely mid-July. And you mean the die that we used?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, we use a blue dye so we could tell where we've sprayed, but okay. And luckily, the rain usually washes pretty quickly.
But even when it died off, it was pretty obvious where you guys had been.
Just because of the dead vegetation?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think that yeah, a lot of weeds, we killed a lot of weeds last year, and hopefully the grass grass should fill in on its own, but it takes it could take a year for that.
Okay. Thank you for the answer.
Yeah.
I asked last year about whether there are any areas of private land which had problems, and then though you identified the resource, it's great that you're working with them. Are there any other areas of privately owned land in Girdwood that you see problems?
I would say maybe just some small private properties that had a lot of and maybe that where the was where the orange hotweed started and spread on the bike path or vice versa. I'm not sure. So we've yeah, we've tried to do outreach to those private property owners to help encourage them to address it. So but yeah.
Questions from the public? Thanks, Dan.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Subcommittee reports, three minutes each. Trails Committee, Carolyn or Kate? And I don't see either one of them.
They just sent me an email and asked me to read something into the record as a report. Thank you very much. As an update on the Girdwood Trails Plan, Christina Hendrickson, myself, is setting groundwork on this project, looking into options to use Bute Company and Holly Sputh to piggyback on the existing work that's being done with the Girdwood Area Plan, possibly kicking off the project this fall with stakeholders forming a planning subcommittee and potentially completing the project in fall of 2020. Currently setting up a scope of work, and we'll work through the budget process to potentially include this in the Girdwood Parks and Rec budget. We identified some stakeholders in the meeting, and we'll be moving forward with that again in the next few weeks. Girdwood Trails Project for the next KMTA grant opening in fall of 2019. There was a good discussion on signage and trails projects to be determined, but it was brought up that Beaver's Pond Trail and Abe's Trail in California Creek would probably take a higher priority. There was also discussion on the kiosk of trailheads off the Crow Creek Road and similar way finding signs to keep in line with the U.S. Forest Service guidelines based on the trail because these represent Class 1, 2, and 3 trails within the community. For the Girdwood Trails Management Plan update, the TMO forum has a new flow chart and shows Girdwood on another chart and the Anchorage process on the other side. Still quite long, but and it is in draft form, but we're looking for feedback from any municipality of Anchorage so that we can finalize the document and move forward. There are volunteer opportunities in the next two months. The Girdwood Trails Committee usually suspends its meetings in June and July in favor of working outside. On June 4th, we're going to be at the Lower Iditarod National Historic Trail. We're going to work with the U.S. Forest Service down there. The project specifically includes shoring up sides of the trail with bone rock and additional ditching. I'm sure Kyle will go into that in more detail. And then in July, mark calendars for right before the Forest Fair, July 2nd, we're going to have a location and a project.
Quick.
And that's to be determined. And Diana Livingston has retired from the Girdwood Trails Board. Thank you for Diana, for all of your service. Girdwood Trails Committee needs a new treasurer. So if you know anybody good with numbers, please let us know. Thank you. That's the report.
Thank you. Next up, land use. Brian Burnett.
Good evening, everybody. We had our regularly scheduled land use committee meeting on May 13 last Monday. Some of the items that we were presented with, we had Tim came and spoke about the invasive the alien species control and invasive weed. So thanks for coming and addressing us at Land Use Committee, as Mike and the board up here suggested. We're excited at Aliaska and appreciate the support that we've gotten from from Tim and from also from Betty Shonan down at the Glacier Ranger District to get this organized and take care of some of the invasive species. And I think we're going to be probably doing a lot more education on invasive species control. You see it at the trailheads and whatnot. The shoe cleaners, the tread cleaners there are there for a purpose, and it never hurts to clean the soles of your shoes off or your bike tires as you're moving from trail to trail. We also heard from Alex Fletcher came and gave us an update on some of her frustrations at Spoon Line with their new beer wine licensing that's going on. She's having some issues with having a trying to get a conditional certificate of occupancy to allow her her permit for serving beer and wine, and there's complications moving through that, but I think they're probably being dealt with. And then we heard from our various subcommittees. We received a Trails Committee report from Kate, and as Christine covered what we heard. Ron Tenney was not around for an HLB Commission report. Girdwood Area Girdwood Area Plan Update. We got just a brief update from from Mike here. Cemetery Committee, GBOS report from Mike Edgington. Title 21, Chapter 9 Review Committee, we had some issues on the agenda and also the House Working Group, and we'll be hearing from those groups again this evening. We had two items in Old Business that we that we made motions on, and we'll be hearing those this evening in Old Business also. First, we heard from Brent and the Herbal Cash LLC about their application for the business license with new ownership. And Girdwood Land Use Committee recommends that the GBOS reaffirm the GBOS Marijuana Memorandum of Understanding with the GBOS Resolution of Support. Land Use Committee voted 11 in favor, no opposed. Additionally, another item on Old Business, the Girdwood Housing Working Group requested a GBOS Resolution of Support for changes to Title 21, Chapter 9 regarding accessory dwelling units. We'll be hearing more on that again tonight. And again, that motion passed 11 to 11 to 0 unanimously at Land Use Committee. We had New Business that we'll be hearing tonight on the agenda for GBOS from the Title 21, Chapter 9 relating to material extraction. We'll be having a presentation here tonight. And then the changes, Title 21, Chapter 9 changes to parking requirements. We'll be hearing that tonight. And also, we've got a dimensional variance request coming from 159 Aspen Mountain Road. That was it for Land Use Committee. We'll be having the next meeting will be on June 14.
Questions for Brian? There are none, we'll go on. So legislative report, John or Adam, who wants to speak first? You both can get up there. How about that?
Adam didn't go for a run before he got here. Winter Creek Trail, it's very nice out there. It's sunny and gorgeous.
Where'd you go?
We should be went up the Winter Creek Trail a little bit. Went with my daughter, who's just starting to get back into running. So a lot of visitors on that trail, too. We saw about 20 people, just New Zealand and all over the place. So what's going on? So I'll give you a rough thing, and then he can do what I normally do and fill in the gaps. So I think, and if we talked about before, we had a big issue with trapping came up last meeting, and people were worried about their dogs and kids getting caught in traps. And this is really one of the few areas where you could trap, I think, you know, fairly liberally. So what we did is a 50-yard buffer from kind of most trails and quarter mile from trailheads, which matches what's in Chugash State Park. So people seem comfortable with that. As soon as we did it, we started getting emails, can you make it 100 yards? So we'll see. We have a climate action plan that we're voting on, having a public hearing on, are voting on tomorrow. And that's pretty exciting for a lot of people because we have an issue with that's a big deal in the ski resort, you know, when it gets warmer. And I'd say there's there's nothing radical in it, though. It really is just a list of 100 or more different things that we should all be doing anyway, you know, like switching LEDs, and you just do that over time, insulating more. So it's but it's nice. It's kind of a let's head this way, kind of sets the flow. And a lot of us, we will study more doing these things, but it's, I think, an appropriate way to get things started. We are also looking at onsite consumption marijuana, which I think we've talked about before. And this first step will just deal with edibles. And we're put off till pretty soon, I think in the next month or so, we'll start looking at inhalation, we're calling it. And that's a little bit trickier because we have kind of smoke-free workplace laws and how what could it possibly work with those and what would it look like? So that's another issue. I mean, even with edibles, there's some issues is because you're creating, just like a bar, you create a place where people go drink and then they go drive, you know? And now we're creating more places that would have that similar issue, and just try to figure out how to get beyond that. But we're also cell phones in school zones, which we've talked about before, and it's surprising, seemed pretty simple. We were on this back in November or something, and boy, things get really complicated. What is an active school zone? How active does it have to be? So we were grappling with that on a Tuesday meeting, and it just doesn't work. So we went back and grappled it with on a work session, and we'll see if that worked better. But we are leaning towards right now, it says 6:00 to 9:00 p.m. on day schools in session. If you're where it's signed, and you can't just go on the flashing lights because most schools don't have the flashing lights that we think about. But then we say, well, wait a minute, there's some places where there's a school sign, but it's really far away from the school because some kids will cross that street and walk a quarter mile to the school. So there's some phrasing in there that says, you know, if the street is nor is 25 miles an hour slower because of the school zone or the flashing lights or something. So it gets a little confusing. So your takeaway should be, one, just don't talk on your cellphone while you're driving. Or two, if you see a school, just hang up. Okay? And you'll be good. Okay? And then bear carts. And that's another thing that we're thinking, we should have had this done, what, in the fall? So here we are, we're not done yet. And we have a meeting tomorrow at 3, which I think at least Mike will be able to attend. And we just want to be careful that we're not these things take time, you know, to talk with everybody. And tomorrow, we're trying to get all the bear, I'm sorry, all the waste haulers, even the just the people aren't doing residential, but just dumpsters, get them together and make sure that we're not missing something. And they may have some opportunities. They may have ideas on how we can improve things. So it is frustrating to go slow, but on the other hand, it's like, we got to get this right. It's really bad to have to go back and tweak it and stuff. But it still is the plan to, when we get it in, designate Girdwood as one of the places where we would have 100% bear carts and see how it goes. You know, if there's kind of unforeseen consequences, you will be the guinea pigs. So get ready for that. So but those are key things, I think. You got anything? Fill the gaps, what I missed.
I got 2.1 objects. So for those I haven't met, my name's Adam Lees. I'm Suzanne's Assembly aide. Since the last time we met, I think the day after the Assembly certified the election and Suzanne was elected to the Vice Chair, that's the first time South Anchorage has had that position for seven years, which is kind of nice. The bear ordinance, John mentioned that, I got that. The safe trails ordinance passed 9 to 2. Tobacco 21, this is something Suzanne is still one of the co-chairs of the Assembly's Health Policy Committee, which they formed, I think, last year for the first time to start really looking at some of these health issues. They are rolling out an omnibus tobacco 21 bill, and essentially what this will do will raise the age to legally purchase tobacco in the municipality from 19 to 21. But it also updates Muni code to incorporate e-cigarettes, vaping, every one of those objects, which right now, that's a major gap in every law at every level of government. They're unregulated, and if you go to any high school, you will find vapers, and you will smell the vaping. It will smell like a very weird cotton candy thing. Seems to be the popular flavor, at least that I've run into. Part of the reason that Suzanne's pushing this, she really wants to focus on public health and public safety issues, you know, as Vice Chair of the Assembly. And this one, besides providing a major gap, a hole in that, there's enough data behind it that most people, when they start smoking, is the first few years between about 18 and 21. And that's when they get hooked. And places where it's been 21, the ratio of people who start smoking is much lower. Turns out, there's actually already businesses throughout the municipality that already, for other reasons, refuse to sell to under 21. Don't anticipate too much of a resistance, but it's a pretty big deal. I know they're still thinking of how they might deal with flavorings because there's lots of complications around that. But so that might not make it in, but that is coming up soon. And you mentioned the climate action plan. And then one Assembly member does have an amendment. She plans to introduce to the onsite consumption, defining last call at two hours before closing. So essentially, at that point, after two hours before a marijuana establishment that must be freestanding sells edibles, they can no longer sell them. So if there's any feedback on specifics on that, whether that's to coning on any other aspects of this or anything else I can take back to Suzanne, I would love to. You could also boundbar John because he wrote the ordinance.
Actually, it's interesting on the last call, you know, on drinking, you say, okay, last call, and then you sober up maybe a bit for an hour or something. We got a chart on THC and how it goes through your body. So particularly with edibles, it's about two hours later where it's really hitting you hard. So we'll have a little debate on that aspect. It's not like not like a bar. Any questions? Okay, we're easy to find. You can go to muni.org, click the big Assembly logo, contacts, and we're all right there. Enjoy hearing from.
Or just hang out at a trailhead, he'll be there eventually.
You try it.
Thanks for coming down. Girdwood Area Plan Update. I don't see Eric or Janice here. Somebody want to give a like?
Well, I'll just briefly say, I think since the last GBOS meeting, we had the Imagine Girdwood event down at the school. It was very well attended. There was great feedback, both through the meeting, through the clickers. We got some live audience polling. And then there was also quite a lot of feedback provided by various notes. So we're gradually working through that. We have a meeting.
Thursday.
Next this Thursday, which is the next meeting, and everyone's welcome to attend. Meetings in this room, in the community room at 6:00 p.m.
Thanks. Claire, Library Report.
Hi, everyone. My name's Claire Agnew, I'm the Gerish Library Manager. That earthquake was a 3.8. Felt bigger. But it was only 3.8. All right, the Gerish Library was open for 164 hours and had 2,608 visitors for the month of April. April, we had our gardening month. We gave away over 1,000 packets of seeds, which is really amazing. Last year, we gave out like 600, so it's really growing. It's really great. Thanks to everyone who participated, who picked up seeds, used them in their gardens or who donated. Remember, if you post pictures of your plants from your seed exchange, tag it hashtag 907 Seed Library so we can look at them. Our gardening programs are coming up. Saturday, June 8th at 2 o'clock is Wild and Edible Perennials, taught by Olivia DeBusk. She'll do a lecture, and then you guys will walk out and try to find some plants to eat. Wednesday, June 12th at 6 is a seedling swap. So have your seedlings that you've started, if you have too many, bring them and swap with your neighbors. And then Saturday, June 22nd at 2 is Introduction to Permaculture, taught by Saskia Esslinger. And it's officially Summer Discovery. Summer's here. So that's our reading and activity program. Every 30 minutes, you read or you're active, you mark off a star on a log. And adults can win a Kindle Fire, and you get a fancy bag. Kids get a book, and you're entered to win all sorts of great prizes. So come by the library to get your log, sign up. It's all ages, babies, adults, everyone can do it. Our Summer Discovery Programs will be Wednesdays at 3:30. We have the Anchorage Museum, the Alaska Zoo, multiple magicians, DJ Spencer Lee's coming back for a dance party, and author Steve Scheinkin will be coming. So Wednesday is at 3:30. Come to those for kids. Family Storytime will start up again June 7th, every Friday at 11 for June and July. Baby Time starts up again June 6th, every Thursday at 12. And for your reminders about all those programs that I just mentioned, it's too much to remember. Follow us on facebook.com/APLGerish. Stop by the library to pick up a calendar, talk to us, and sign up for Summer Discovery. Any questions? John?
Did you do pre-comic books that day?
We did. It was very slow that day, sorry. But there were a few kids who are like, pre-comic books. Yes, so thank you, John, for pre-comic books. Any other questions? All right, thanks.
Thanks, Claire, as always. Manager Report, Kyle.
Good evening. I'm Kyle Kelly, the Girdwood Area Service Area Manager. Starting with Parks, Girdwood Parks and Rec, Margaret and I, we offered a position to David Parr, and he'll be our seasonal maintenance guy here in the park. So he started today, so you'll see him out there working on garden beds, doing projects, pulling trash, dealing with mud mitts. So say hi to him. He'll be here through mid-September with us. We have two SCA crew members, Student Conservation Association interns, who have arrived here in Alaska. They're right now in training with SCA, and then they will be coming down and being our trail crew this summer. So if you're out on the trail and you come across these guys who are in SCA uniforms, they are dedicated to Girdwood Trails and fixing them this summer. So they will start us on June 2nd, and they will be living with the U.S. Forest Service personnel. So that'll be nice for them to work with other crew members and live with them this summer. Emily Maxwell has started as our campground host. She is over there in the camper at the campground host spot, so if you're out and about and see her there, she is there for the summer, and her claim to fame is she's run a didgeridoo twice now, and she has a couple of her dogs with her there. Weed contract, we are underway for the 2019 as presented tonight. We'll be cleaning the windows here this weekend, and our turf and trash, I guess it is our turf contract has started already. The guy will be out mowing the lawn every weekend. So things are rolling for the summer. Beautification, our Parks Caretaker will be handling a lot of the trash. If you see problems out there, just let us know, we'll get somebody to it right away. We had a father and sons group here this weekend, I think almost like 25 to 30 people over there, and they volunteered and spread two large truckloads of gravel for us around the Nissman Pavilion and the pathways for the for the campground back there. They did a great job. They knocked it out in a couple hours, lots of hands, so we thank them. Also, we want to thank the Girdwood second graders who came over and picked up large branches, some of them about the size of them, and they dragged them through the woods and got them off the pathways and basically just did a cleanup from the winter blowdown out there. And the Girdwood third graders are coming tomorrow, and they're going to rake out the volleyball court for us and get that all prepared for the volleyball players this summer. And they also attended Little Bears last week and did reading with them and helped them with their playground in the back. The Girdwood Lion Club came and did a huge cleanup of the picnic area, their park over there essentially, and moved all the leaves out and got that prepared to us. So it's looking really welcoming in that area. We had Greatland Tree Service out here, and they completed a lot of dead wooding from our cottonwood trees, especially above the camp or the park host site over there. And then they also took out a hazard tree that was just to the just past the campground host over there and cut that up, and we moved that all today and created more log benches in there for Forest Fair and just for the park in general with the trees that were cut. On June 1st, we'll be having a community planting. We invite anybody to come out. We're going to meet in Town Square, and we're going to plant all the seasonal flowers through all the planters here in town. We've had great turnout for this in the back in the years past, and then Margaret and I will provide a barbecue afterwards for those who come out and volunteer. So it'll be 10 a.m. Town Square. Come on over. We'll have everything laid out for you. You just got to go over and put the flowers in the pot for us and get that done. So really makes town all of a sudden really pop out with all that. Let's see here, the baseball field is now in use, and we are making a rule, basically reinforcing a rule that no pets on the field, and we're going to go with the year round on this. We've had some issues with kids getting in the dog do, and we're trying to make sure that people realize that's not a dog park, it's still a baseball field, and it was built by the community for that purpose. So we really respect that people would not use it for those purposes. But we thank the baseball league out there who went out and did excellent job cleaning it up and getting it ready and moving along. Little bears, we'll be working on the assessment this summer with our our crew of people to get that fixed up from our the assessment that we had done on it last year for safety. Just a few major things to deal with, but nothing that puts it in danger at this point in time. Lions Club, we're still working with them on their potential for a new pavilion. They like to build a shelter at their parks, so we're working down that path with them in the hopes of maybe getting something next year built. Tennis court, we'll be hanging the Tennis Court, we'll be hanging the wind screens this week with the Tennis Court Committee, and we're trying to probably do it within the next two days, so if you're interested, let us know, we'll let you know if you want to come out and hang those. And we want to thank Amanda and Stacy who installed information keyhouses that were built by the Cub Scouts for both the skate park and the tennis courts, a place for information to be put up about events and the committees who support them. The Skate Park, we had a huge work party on May 4th, we completed the new box jump that's been requested by the skaters and the scooter riders. And we want to give a big thank you to John Gallup for leading this group effort. He did a great job of getting it done. Margaret's primary duty that day was to make sure he ate and drank. And he did, he made it through the day, so he kept all these skaters organized and they built the ramp, and we got it done like in six hours. So if you go over and take a look at it, it's a cool ramp over there. And we want to thank Tommy O'Malley for the work he did in Town Square with painting the chess pieces, basically the chess board, and then recreating the pieces that were either broken or disappeared. He takes five-gallon buckets and cuts out the chess pieces over there. And right now, we're figuring out the solution for checkers. We've had wood pieces in the past, but they tend to get broken or they disappear, so we're going to work through that. But chess is ready to go, and there's checkers on the rails for smaller games. Trails, we talked a lot about trails, but one thing--
Sorry, question about the earthquake damage on the tennis court?
Yeah.
Like, what kind of repair is needed?
So we ordered Nova Seal, it's actually called NovaCock, and we put it in there. And so once we get a nice two dry days, we're going to get out there, and the temperatures look like they're going to stay above 50 degrees at night, we'll get out there and just seal it. Luckily, the cracks were all hairline cracks that happened from the earthquake, so it'll be very easy to repair. Actually, this material's meant for larger cracks, so they said, oh, you just jam it in there and paint it over, and you should be in good shape.
Oh, okay.
But it will always be an issue going forward that we'll probably have to stay on top of for repair.
Is it going to catch us in your back?
With trails, we talked a lot about that, but one thing I want to point out is that we started work today on the Lower Didgeridoo Trail. Andy Henlund is down there, and he pulled all the stumps out of a new section of trail we're putting in, and he'll start bringing gravel, fabric and gravel in to set the base material down there. So if you are traveling down there, that will be going on. And then our pile driver, which I keep hearing this almost every day, is supposed to show up tomorrow, and he's going to go out and drive the piles hopefully this week for the new bridge. So we're going to probably be out there about midweek and taking out the old bridge, which is pretty much almost down by itself, but we'll get that out, we'll get those piles in. And at some point next week, we're going to work with Alpine Air, we're going to fly in the beams for this bridge, and then all the, probably all the material. It's a lot easier than trying to haul it out there, it's kind of right in the middle of where we need to be with this trail project. So they've given us all that volunteer time, we're using it to offset our grant costs so we can put all the money that we're getting from the grant towards material for this project. So it's working out really well, we really thank Alpine Air for their support there doing that. And we want to thank the Gerwood Nordic Ski Club for all their efforts, and to Shane Boland, he volunteered all his efforts two weekends ago to take our two machines in, fully serviced them, and then him and I were able to get them back in the shed without snow, even though we almost got stuck in the dirt. They're back in there, and they're ready to go for next year. The hand tram, we opened it up last week, and we want to thank Brian Burnett and Paul Cruz for coming out and giving us a hand. We did a full inspection on it, went through it, tightened the rope, and we are ready to go. The next thing in front of us is that annually, we do a rope replacement, even though it's not needed, we like to put a new rope out every year, just so it doesn't break down on us halfway through the season. So that is a task in itself, to set it up, and that rope, just so you know, has a steel core in the middle, so if it fails, there's a 3/8 steel core in the middle. So when we go to unravel it, it's just a real process to make sure it goes out straight and all that. So we tend to save our energy just for that when we do that project. But it is open to get out, I just went and ran it this weekend, it was awesome. Campground is open as of today, so if you have any family you want to get away from your house, the campground's right over there, $10 a night, and we will be checking to make sure they pay. Grants, the grants have been issued for two grant contracts for '19 have been issued, and we're starting the grant process for 2020, as mentioned, and grant applications are available online here at the library or stop by our office and we can help you find it, and also at the post office. Other grants that we've received, we have a $17,000 grant for the California Creek Bridge from KMTA. We have a matching grant of $4,900 for new tools from KMTA, which we've always started to purchase. We're getting a power wheelbarrow that's coming in, which will help these guys save their back and move a lot more material at a given time. And we have a RTP grant from the state, which is basically from federal fuel tax for $75,000 that we're using for that next phase of the didgeridoo down there, which Andy's working on. And then we received, we're waiting on to see if we won a $15,000 grant from the Anchorage Parks Foundation, and we did receive notice that we won a grant for $890, which we can put towards that power wheelbarrow from the Anchorage or the Alaska Community Foundation, sorry. And so we're putting these all to use this summer. As always, Margaret does a great job of keeping the website up and our social media current out there. Quickly, with cemetery, cemetery, we had a meeting on May 1st. At that meeting, the primary thing was meeting with the representative from Eagle River who's interested in developing a cemetery up there. And so the steps going forward is for the committee to continue to push forward on drafting a cemetery operating guidelines and rules, and then as well for the committee to work with Eagle River and Chuyac on their development, so that if this does go out the bond, the two areas are working together to get pocket cemeteries within their region for those who are desiring to have cemeteries. So that work is moving forward there and will continue to. Switching over to the roads, we've moved into spring road grading and applying calcium as weather allows. I wish we just have a longer stretch of drier weather, but we work with it, and today we were off, but tomorrow they'll be back on, and we'll continue to do that. And once we get done with that, we'll move into our list of road and drainage maintenance projects and repairs. As well, we will hopefully have MOA paint crew down here to do all the striping in Town Square. Our responsibility is to do all the parking stripes, so that got all completed just two weeks ago, so they'll be here soon. Since the last meeting, we've done grading, applying calcium, brushing, spring cleanup, drainage repair, and striping of all parking lines in Town Square. Major projects going on right now within the valley. We're currently working on the replacement of Little Bears in Glacier City Hall. We're looking at, that project may estimate around $2 million, $2.2 million. We got approval from GBOS to move forward to put it to a bond proposition in the 2020 election, so next April. We currently have finished the feasibility plan with Karen Sakaro and her firm ECI. We are working with Dave Deneer from Burkhardt Croft in the development of sort of an idea what the building will look like, and it'll give a sense for fundraising efforts and also moving forward on the bond proposition. It will basically be a draft-up of about 20% of what the plans would look like for this building. And then we are working with Planning Department on the zoning issues with this parcel, and the parking issues with traffic, and the setback requirements of a park parcel where this building is currently located. So we're working through a lot of things, and we're pushing forward to hopefully get a package in front of the Assembly this fall for the bond proposition. So they'll continue to move forward, and we appreciate Little Bears and Karen Sakaro with ECI who gave us all pro bono time to do this for Little Bears and the development of it. In the Aliaska Highway and Eglo Crosswalk Pedestrian Flasher System, we have a meeting tomorrow, which will be kickoff with the contractor Hickel Construction, who will be putting that system in, and we hope to start on that mid-June. And they think once they get going, it can go pretty quick. They're just actually waiting for materials to come up from Lower 48 to get the system in. So the survey has been completed, and it'll start to roll real quick. Quickly on expenses, the Gerwood Area Undesignated Service, undesignated account has $198,000 in it. We will know, we'll be able to do an audit here shortly, since first quarter revisions have been completed, OMB will be able to give us an audit, and we'll know exactly what was left over from last year. I'm sure that number will go up for the undesignated account. And as of right now, we spent $181,000 so far with the contractor. The contractor did buy the calcium last month, so that price is a little bit higher than normal because of the material purchase there, but right on par where we've been in years past. Overall, the roads budget has spent 31% of its funding. Parks has spent 13%. We're into Parks now, so we'll start to see those expenditures go up as the season opens up. Police, we spent 26%. We've been doing billing in three-month increments, so we will probably have another set here soon. And then fire, so far expended out of the fire budget 35%. So, any questions?
I have a question. First question is the turf contract.
Yes.
Is it a flat amount?
It is a flat amount, it's not an exceed amount.
The reason I ask is we were out there last night at like 7:30 in Town Square, and we are, I assume they're not making overtime?
No, no, we don't pay for overtime, it's a monthly--
It was finally dry at 7:30 last night, that's why.
It was a difficult time to mow a lawn when it's raining.
Kyle, I have a question about the pedestrian flasher. Noting that the construction meeting is tomorrow, and I recognize you'll get a schedule then, but with a mid-June start date, what is the potential impacts to that intersection at Forest Fair?
We will discuss it, but they were made aware of it, so if they are in construction mode and they have to stop, they need to make the area safe. It'd just be like the other construction scenarios we've had with Eglo Road and Town Square. It'll be their responsibility to make sure it's safe.
Where is their planned construction staging area?
Well, we'll discuss that tomorrow, but it could be across from the fire station, or if they need to, we can start stuff down in the industrial park.
Okay.
Yep.
And then last question, that survey work, quickly?
Which survey?
That survey work for the pedestrian--
Oh, yes, yeah.
What do pure gold theodolites look like?
I don't know, you know, I'm sure it's going to be the best of the best.
Yeah, it's sort of tenuous months.
There's one guy working it, so that's a whole different issue. Any questions?
Thank you.
Next up, I think we're at Supervisor Report, turn the page. And first, Public Safety. The only thing I have is there was a public safety meeting this evening at 6:00, just to discuss parking, and it's a fact on Forest Fair, and that's coming up on the agenda. Number nine on the agenda is permitting, and we'll just talk about that then. Other than that, I'll turn it over to the Chief, Chief or Assistant, Temporary Chief, I don't know what your title is.
Interim Chief.
Interim Chief, there you go.
Hi, my name is Andre Shae, I'm the Interim Chief for Whittier Police Department. During the last two months, I'm going to overcap a little bit of April as well as to date current this month. We initiated some new software to manage our personnel as well as manage our records management system and our computer aided dispatch, which is our dispatch service. In the fall of last year, we contracted out, City of Whittier contracted out to the Cordova Police Department to do dispatch service for us. That ensures a better police service, both to Whittier as well as Gerwood. That way, it doesn't have the officers answering phone calls from citizens while on active calls. So Cordova is actually our 24/7 dispatch service. During that process last month, we initiated what's called part of our records management system, we initiated what's called a CAD program, computer aided dispatch. So instead of writing everything by hand, everything's managed into a database system, then transfers over when there's a police report to a report writing module. The report writing module covers all the police reports, all our evidence, et cetera, that nature. We're still working out some issues with, for adequate reports, based that on, of course, I provide to Gerwood, as the amount of calls we have, cost of service, manpower, and stuff like that over here. So we're working out some details to get you a better accurate representation of what we do for Gerwood. During the time, in April 2, I took over as Interim Chief of Police. Prior to that, I worked six months for Gerwood. I'm retired from Western Alaska as a police chief out there. During that, and during a couple of concerns that happened during April was with trapped closures between Whittier and Gerwood. Some of the questions that came up was, is Gerwood going to have adequate police response? During those limited days closures, that was brought up, so we ensured and we maintained officers on this side, so there was no break in service. So if there was an emergency here, we'd still have an officer here, and there'd still be officers immediately available for backup if they have to come in from the Whittier side. So we maintain service. During this month as well, some of the areas we changed during this month, we had some personnel added. On May 2nd, we hired our first, from what I was told, our first female police officer for the City of Whittier that will also service Gerwood as DB. Rose Gordon, she has approximately five, six years of service in Southeast Alaska, and she's currently on tunnel detail, and she'll go back and forth in Whittier and Gerwood. Next month, we also hired a conditional officer, another police officer, about 18 years of experience, and he'll be starting about the first week of June. We anticipate getting backup, full staff, so there will always be at least two officers in the given area. So it'll be faster transition if there's an emergency backup, and if we need to work with Whittier Fire or Gerwood Fire, we'll have officers available. Some of the other questions that's come up throughout the last month or so is, what kind of, how does the Whittier Police Department respond to some calls that's technically out of our jurisdiction? Our current jurisdiction is within the city of Gerwood, Aliaska Highway. We're not responsible technically for any enforcement on the Seward Highway, that's Anchorage Police Departments. However, if there is an emergency there, we will respond, or if we get a request by Anchorage Police Department, because there's a major incident there, if we have officers in the area, it's an unwritten mutual aid agreement. We will help them out, they'll help us out. So we'll continue to do that. Some of the aspects, there's some officers who've been here for a while, we're just trying to re-educate and retrain, basically so they'd be more part of the community, regardless if it's within our official jurisdictional area. If it's something dealing with health, welfare, safety, we will respond, period. That's one thing I'm trying to tell the officers. A lot of times, they're saying, well, this is our map, we're not supposed to go outside. If it involves health, safety, or emergencies, we will help, you know, and wait for the appropriate sources that has appropriate jurisdiction to take over from there. Other than that, we anticipate hopefully the summer is safe for everyone. If there's any other issues, please feel free to contact me at the Gerwood Police Department, and I go back and forth between Gerwood and Whittier.
Question for Police Department?
There's actually one other question that was brought up. Last month, there's some issues with our telephone system, some complaints came up, the line continually ringing busy. I did get with ACS, which is our telephone contractor, they got hold of their engineers. They actually tracked down what the issue was, there was some equipment issue on our Cordova end, so we've addressed that issue, we're monitoring that, so there is no break in service. Even with that, like I said, we've helped Anchorage Police and they help us out, if there was issues on that, they actually sent some of their officers and notified us afterwards. So that's one of the things we like to try to do, just work with other enforcement agencies in the area.
Any questions from the board, from the public? Thank you for your great service.
Thank you.
Next up, Public Safety Action Report, PSAC Representative. Do you want to say anything?
It's under our business.
Okay, next up, Roads and Utilities. James, you got anything to add?
I don't think so, Kyle covered everything. We approved the invoices this month.
Parks and Rec, Christina.
Just a few things, Kyle, of course, you know, two and a half pages worth of trail stuff, there's a lot going on. For those that weren't able to attend the Gerwood Trails Committee Meeting at the beginning of the month, included in the packet was my memo from the Gerwood Trails Conference. Myself and Jonathan went, we took two completely different tracks. He focused on construction and sustainable practices, and I went to figure out how to get funding for all of the trails' projects and all the entities that recreate here in the Gerwood Valley. So in there are point-by-points of some of the opportunities for other nonprofits, so it's a good repository for you to mine for potential funding for your projects. Also, if you want to get outside and contribute at 10:00 on the first, again, there's the planting of flowers, there's the Iditarod Historic Trail Work Party on the 4th of June, and then I'm currently trying to chase funds for the Gerwood Trail Plan, especially using some of the input that we had at the very successful Imagine Gerwood event. And I would like to put in another plug to attend this Thursday's meeting for the Gerwood Area Plan. It's a two-hour meeting from 6:00 to 8:00 in this room, but it's specifically focused on the goals and objectives that they want to accomplish in the next year. So if you want to have a role in seeing how all of those comments from the community meeting and the input from the surveys help shape us in the conversation we're having as a community over the next year, I encourage you to stop by. Thank you.
Okay, next up, Erin, Fire Department.
Not too much to report yet, just kind of coming up to speed on the issues, and I look forward to meeting with Michelle soon and sit down and get educated.
Michelle, you're up.
Hi there, Michelle Weston, Fire Chief. First, I want to say, you can hear the noise, I asked them to stop doing the sirens. So what's wonderful for us this month-- So what's wonderful for us this month is we have eight new volunteers, and so what they're doing tonight is they're actually learning how to turn the sirens on and everything, so. They obviously have figured it out, so that's a good thing. But anyway, so we have eight new volunteers, and then we have six more starting in June. So of those 14 that are starting, eight of those are Girdwood residents, so super happy about that. We've also picked up two of the State Fire Training Center staff are gonna come and help us as resource advisors. They'd like to possibly volunteer starting in October, but for summer, we're gonna pull them in as resource members, so they'll also be here, so that's super fabulous. We were busy today, we had a pediatric child that was choking call, and then we also were down Winter Creek for somebody helping them down by the bridge. So we're busy in that. This week, tourist season has definitely started in the last week. We were on the train earlier in the week, and then also, we did a rescue off of the tram area where a gentleman had decided to crawl across the tram cable and was 80 feet up when we got there. So that was not advised. So yeah, so we've been busy, and if anybody has any old office chairs that have a wipeable surface, we are looking for that. And then CERT wise, CERT meets every fourth Monday, and at this CERT meeting coming up next week, we're gonna be talking about, we've got $2,000 worth of equipment donated for the Emergency Operations Center for us, so emergency supplies to cash here in Girdwood. And then we also were able to get 50 to 70, we're hoping 70, cots and blankets from the Red Cross to also store in Girdwood. So super happy about those two things, so we're actually building up emergency supply stash in Girdwood in case ourselves or visitors in the summer get stuck here with a rockslide or whatever, so. Also, high fire danger right now, even though we did have a wetting rain, it is fire, high fire danger around, more in the interior but also around Anchorage. So you should check Burning Guidelines every day at 267-5020. It changes daily. You could also just look at mimi.org, is it a burn day, and you can find that too. And then additionally, the AFD Foresters still has the Cough Share Program for defensible space wildfire preparedness around your home, so if you have conifers right around your home, you can come and have a defensible space assessment, and then they'll pay for 50% of the conifers to be removed up to your house. So that's something else that is available. Any questions?
I have one question. CERT meeting next Monday, which is Memorial Day?
Oh, maybe not. CERT, no CERT meeting next Monday, yes. So the CERT meeting will be in June.
Okay, thanks.
So, yeah. Any other questions? Nope? Okay. And then we have an extrication workshop going on next weekend. It's our sneaky way of having everybody enough staffing in town for the weekend, so you might see us cutting up cars in the industrial site on the weekend, so.
Thanks, Michelle. Land use, Mike?
Yeah, so nothing specifically on land use, but I have several items coming up later in the meeting, so I'll talk about them mostly then. I'll just say one quick thing about Housing Working Group, so we have an item later about exonerative dwelling units, but we're working on several other issues as well. We just started looking at the issue of short-term rentals and whether we have the right level of regulation at the moment in town. And that's it, two notes later.
Thanks. Public comment. Person's offering public comment must state their full name and address. Public comment is limited to three minutes per person and must be on subjects not listed on the agenda. Do you have any public comment? Crystal?
Hi, everybody. I wanted to introduce myself. I started as Executive Director for Girdwood Alliance, so if anybody has anything they'd like to talk about in relation to advocating for Girdwood's people, infrastructure and recreation, I would be happy to hear about it, and you can email me at executivedirector@girdwoodalliance.org. And the other thing that I want to say is I still want to be able to communicate as a member of the community without having it to be necessarily from Girdwood Alliance, so I'll say that if I'm speaking on behalf of Girdwood Alliance, I'll make that very clear, but otherwise, it's just Crystal speaking, so, thank you.
Thanks, Crystal. Anybody else?
Mike Welch, one minute, three seconds out here in Girdwood. I do work for Chi-Hatch Powder Guys, this is in reference to a proposed regulation change in the Glacier Winter Special Use Area. The DNR is proposing to change Title 11 of the Alaska Administrative Code that will affect a permitting process for the Glacier Winter Special Use Area. The main, I'll keep it nice and short since I'm in that three-minute timeframe, the, there's a public comment period, it ends June 14th, encouraging everyone to take a look at it. The important process, parts of the process that aren't really covered in that currently that might benefit people that are actually gonna be heli-skiing in Girdwood are tenure and exclusive use, and tenure in an operation that takes people out of the backcountry is a good thing. It provides institutional knowledge and terrain familiarization and should be included in the process. And exclusively use in a small geographical area like the Girdwood Valley is a good thing because it allows for terrain progression days after a storm, and as we've seen in other places, when there's multiple operators trying to operate in one area, the first day after a storm, you know, it can create a bit of a cowboy atmosphere that I don't think we want in Girdwood necessarily, so. There's a proposed rule changes coming up, it's worth digging into up here after the meeting if anybody wants to get the links to those rule changes, so, that's about it. But yeah, tenure and exclusive use, a good thing.
Any questions?
Are they, they're taking comments for a certain?
Yeah, I told you. They are taking comments, and this is not really me supporting, you know, it would influence my job and things like that, but whoever gets the permit should probably have tenure and exclusive use. It will make it safer out there, so that's the main thing I wanted to get across as a community member.
Thank you for bringing that up.
Okay. I don't think we have any more public comment, hearing none. Oh Business, Agenda Item LUC 181005 Herbal Cash LLC, application for business license with new ownership, providing update licensing and seeking reaffirmation of Girdwood Marijuana Memorandum of Understanding and Resolution of Support. Brent, you're there.
Yes. So, hello, my name's Brent Cars, I need a kind of a quick update on the Herbal Cash. On May 2nd, I was approved by the State Marijuana Control Board, and so now I'm currently going through the municipal application process with my assembly meeting set for June 18th. If I get approved on the June 18th meeting, I'm gonna try to open up as kind of soon as possible, just pending inspections and receiving licenses. Obviously, Forest Fair would be an ideal time to open, but we'll see how soon I can kind of schedule all those. So yeah, going through the municipality application process, I'm trying to kind of get a reaffirmation of the memorandum of understanding that was issued in November, and try to get a resolution of support from the GBOS.
So do we have someone in here? Okay, and who's gonna read?
I have to read that? But I have a question first, if that's okay. Are you proposing any changes from how we used to know and look at this?
No, it should be pretty much the same.
Except for these is the only difference.
Yeah, yeah, the Herbal Cash and then LLC is kind of the big difference, a few sign changes and a few little aesthetics, but really nothing major at all.
I've got glasses now, so it doesn't have to be 16, please. So Resolution 2019-07 of the Girdwood Board of Supervisors, resolution of support for the Herbal Cash LLC Marijuana Retail Store License. Whereas the Herbal Cash LLC Marijuana Retail Store License is due for approval by the Anchorage Assembly, and whereas the Girdwood Land Use Committee and the Girdwood Board of Supervisors received presentations from the Herbal Cash at their regular meetings in October and November of 2018, in which public comment was requested and no negative comments were received, and whereas the Herbal Cash LLC and the Girdwood Board of Supervisors signed a memorandum of understanding in November 2018, and whereas the change in business structure does not alter the direct management of the Herbal Cash LLC, which is expected to continue operation in a professional and lawful manner, provide positive economic benefits to the community, and be a good steward in our community, therefore be it resolved that the Girdwood Board of Supervisors supports the Herbal Cash LLC's application for a marijuana retail store license upon receipt of all required documents by the municipality of Anchorage, passed and approved by the Girdwood Board of Supervisors the 20th day of May 2018 by a vote of X, Y.
So I guess I have a question, and it's kind of, play it back to John. So you've gotta wait until, what'd you say, June 18th to get on the agenda?
That's kind of what I've scheduled.
Is there any way you could get moved up?
I've tried, talking to the planning department, I think it's...
Oh, it's gotta go through planning, is that...
Yeah, so I think it has to go through all the different departments, and I think that's what kind of...
I would say we have two guns.
Yeah.
It was a song.
Yeah, John?
It'd be really hard to move up because we meet tomorrow, it would be introduced, right? We introduce marijuana, it's gonna be introduced, so we have to introduce it on June 4th, and you'd be two weeks later, so it's really...
Yeah, that's what I was...
They're not ready, they're not ready.
That's kind of what I was under the, understanding of, yeah.
I was trying.
I appreciate it, I wish.
Any other questions? Sitting down, call for vote, all in favor of the resolution? Thanks.
Thank you.
Next up, Girdwood Forest Fair 2019 Permitting. Tommy O'Malley, discuss Forest Fair parking. Girdwood Fire and Rescue concerns a neighborhood access to Egress, request a letter of non-injection to Forest Fair permitting. I'm so lucky, I get so many of these. Thank you.
Tommy O'Malley, I'm the Minister of Paperwork for the Girdwood Forest Fair Committee. Kyle sent me an email today out of the 28 things on the punch list. There are six, five that have not been completed because we are waiting on the security contract and the barricade permit for the parade. The security contract went out to bid this week, and we're waiting on that one, a signed permit, but the Heritage Land Bank permit, the noise permit, the parade permit, the ride-away permit are all contingent on having a security contract in place. Two other items, the one, the parking permit at Aliaska, every year for the past, I don't know, 10 years, we've had a contract with Aliaska and we pay them $5,000, have paid them $5,000 for the use of their day lodge parking lot, and that should be done this month. The Alcohol Control Board, Alcohol and Marijuana Control Board permit from the state has been entered and paid for. Each of these permits require about five or six different sub, like for the Alcohol Control Board, Chief Achea had to sign it, and we had to have notarized, so it's a big deal, but everything is in line and in the pipeline to be finished before, before the end of this month, which is astounding to me. It's a, we've gotten our permits all in order in the past, done on July 4th, when the fair started the day before, so that we're a month or so ahead is, is a good sign. Kyle has been working with the Forest Fair Committee to make sure that all the permits are in order and, and all that. We're on our way, record time. And today, we submitted the, the Forest Fair Site Plan, so that takes another one off, so maybe there's only three left out of 28. Good.
Lot of paper.
Yeah, a lot of paper. Yeah.
So are we looking for a non-injection to the Forest Fair permitting tonight?
Yes.
Okay. So the big thing is the park?
No, it's not, according to our permit process. The only, the, the only parking that is accounted for in a permitting process is whether we have a parking plan at Aliaska Park, for Aliaska. That's all that's been required in the past, and the, and Aliaska Parking is the only area outside the permitted area, that is, the Forest Fair Park and the Heritage Land Bank Park, that we are, that we are required to contend with or be in control or be permitted for. The, in, in the permit for the ride-away for the parade, in Anchorage, in the Anchorage Police Service Area, organizations like the Ferandevu are required to have police, to hire police to control parking and traffic around that area, but since we are outside the police service area in Anchorage, Whittier is the designated police force according to the permitting process, and our police force has, there's a letter in our file that says that, that attests to the, the Whittier Police Department's awareness of the Forest Fair. They're gonna have, I talked to Chief Achea, and they're gonna have all of their officers on duty, and they are both, you know, all the way, all the roads in Girdwood, and they'll be looking to slow people down on the highways and the roads.
I'd like to speak to the park manager. Some of the concern that came from last year was overfording, so this year, Girdwood Forest Fair is contracting a bus service to have two buses running from Girdwood to Anchorage every hour and a half to two hours, depending on traffic. We're gonna set a schedule, and we're working through the logistics of that now, and you can buy a really cheap ticket, hop on the bus, and come down to mitigate some of that traffic issue. So that is something we're in the process of right now. There'll be a pickup location in Anchorage, we'll drop off here at the fairgrounds, and then it'll head back to Anchorage and take anyone back on it. It will be pre-purchased ticket times, so you have to buy the time you're arriving and the time you're leaving, when you buy your ticket.
Another traffic mitigation that we're going to be doing is that we are hiring DOT certified traffic crossing guards, and we want people to be aware that for the first hour after the parade, there will not be pedestrian crossing at Hightower and Aliaska Egloff intersection. We'll be directing people to go, to use the pass under the bridge because we've found that, that blockage creates a plug in the road, and so we're hoping to, by not allowing people across, that we'll be able to alleviate some of that. If there are people who are in wheelchairs, we'll make an exception, either putting them in a wheelchair accessible bus and letting them through, but for everybody else, there's an hour wait or a short walk under the bridge on the path there. Also, outside of the, the Forest Fair's venue, I understand that Rotary Club is going to be having a paid-for parking, parking lot, and I believe the... be having a paid-for parking, parking lot, and I believe the, the church here is going to be renting out space in their parking lot. But that's, parking and areas outside the forest fair permitted area, that's this area right here, are not part of the permit process.
So, Public Safety Action Committee just had a meeting, and they had a resolution that they, and are advising us to have a couple APD officers who can come down and help enforce parking for maybe six, seven, eight hours on Saturday. And the idea is that the chief has had problems at times getting equipment through different roads through the community, and they're recommending, the recommendation from the Public Safety Action Committee was that the forest fair pay for that. So that's before us, and that happened just before this meeting.
But can we ask Chief Weston to speak about her concerns for safety for our community due to overcrowded streets or something?
Sure, that would be good. We got the players here.
Okay, so the concern is, as we have these large community events in Girdwood, which we love, which also benefit a lot of people economically in the community, as we are a resort town, unfortunately, what's been happening is, when all the parking fills up, everybody then parks in the neighborhoods. What that creates is a situation where we can't get ambulances or fire trucks down the road, and we have all the hydrants blocked. And so, we have no mechanism to, other than using police officers, to be able to move that equipment, so, to be able to move people who are parked illegally. And so, it's, you know, to me, I think that every resident of Girdwood deserves to have access to, for an ambulance or a fire truck during a large community event, but with recent events, larger events, there's been times where, depending on what road you live on, we couldn't get an ambulance or a fire truck down those roads. So the issue is to have some police presence that will be able to move traffic along, so we will be able to access the roads and be able to get ambulances to people who might have a problem.
So, Carrie, my one comment about this is, I'd like it to, I don't necessarily want to have it as a forest fair has to pay for this, it should be events. I don't want it to be specifically us. I feel that is a little bit unfair to other events, or to us, compared to other events.
I would agree with you, and we discussed this at the Public Safety Action Committee, and I asked Kyle, I said, "So, Slush Cup, can we require Aliaska to pay for extra officers to come down for parking?" And because they're on private property, they don't have to go get a permit, so how do we enforce that with Aliaska? I don't know that question.
A resolution was passed last year or the year before, area-wide, that allowed, that would allow our police to write tickets or impound cars if they obstructed or occluded the driveways, or fire hydrants, or didn't allow emergency vehicles to get past. And you guys know that when you were, when, to add that duty to our police department, it would have cost in excess of $140,000, but you, it was your responsibility to ask for the, our police to have that duty, and the, that authority now rests with the Girdwood Board of Supervisors. The, you didn't decide to go with our police enforcing traffic here in Girdwood, maybe because of the cost, but where that left our community and the Board of Supervisors is with a unenforced ordinance for parking. The only people that can write tickets and impound cars then would be the Anchorage Parking Authority or the Anchorage Police Department. Our research showed that you can hire Anchorage police officers at about $134 or something an hour, and they come in a pair, so that's $260 an hour, for an eight-hour day, it's something like $2,000. At a meeting with Chief Ashay and Chief Weston, Kyle and Ty Lee and Michael Palca and I, we looked at, at the data of when cars were towed and where the problems were. It seems to me that, it seemed, or it showed that the problems with parking happened on the Saturday when 8,000 people came to town. There were three impounds during last year's forest fair. I might note, there were six impounds, or tickets for impound during Slush Cup this year. But again, the, the authority to write tickets now is with the Anchorage Police Department or Anchorage Parking Authority. Anchorage Parking Authority is out to lunch on the weekends, which is when we would need them. Our recommendation coming from that meeting was that, because it's a community safety issue, and because it's a responsibility of the service area, that the service area should provide that ticketing capacity, ticketing and impound capacity.
If, if we're still going with what they recommended, I still would like it to see it say festivals or large events instead of forest fair's name, because then it limits it to us.
Yeah.
Whether it applies to Aliaska Resort is not, I just, I don't want it to be limited to just us. If someone else is holding a large festival or a large, and it's impacting traffic, they should have to be, have to do this too. If we put Girdwood Forest Fair on it, then it's just us, and anyone else clogging up traffic in the community would not have to do this.
There's also the, the reality of the forest fair, even though it's not in any of the permits, that the permit to, to have the forest fair is granted by the Girdwood Board of Supervisors. The Slush Cup is not granted by the Board of Supervisors. Baby New Year doesn't have a wallet in his pocket, I don't think you could stick him with the cost of police officers, although our retired state trooper, Michael Palca, will tell of some harrowing New Year's Eve celebrations here. Not that it, not that you guys want to jump right into this new responsibility of traffic control at certain events, but it has fallen to you because of the ordinance that was passed, and that you sought out a contract with Whittier to do that very thing. I think the responsibility for the safety of the community falls to the, is with the Girdwood Board of Supervisors.
So, that's, yeah. Christina, you have a question?
I do. Have you ever done that before?
No.
Okay. Just trying to figure out the roles and responsibilities, and looking at the packet that you've put together, the security for this year will include private security, that's patrolling campground, beer garden, all within the permit area. You also have, from traffic control, another private contractor that's going to be helping out. Now we're looking at-
But I want to reiterate that the, the crossing people are not part of the contract. It's due to all our volun, all the volunteers in Girdwood are volunteering already.
Exactly where I'm going with this. So, we've got a private entity in the campground and beer garden within the permit area. We have a private entity helping out with traffic. We have APD helping out with potentially parking enforcement. We have our own Whittier Police Department, we have our own fire department and EMS. Who's IC, who's the incident command?
That's what we've talked about, go ahead.
Oh, no, I recognize that, I'm just trying to get that out in the open.
So, if I could talk about last year, so for fire and police, we did unified command-
You did unify.
And I got to hold you down to the local incident commander, we did unified command in there. So that way, for the 66 calls, we had during forest fair, at least for fire EMS, I was able to triage them, so they weren't all going to 911. So that was easy for me to triage them that way, and send people up, and then we'd call on the radio and we'll place them on the call with dispatch and bring them up. And that worked pretty well. Because what we were also doing is, we were not only responding to fire EMS calls, we were also responding to helping out with the lost children calls and everything else.
Understood. As a follow-up question, Mike, I see that you're the head of security for the event. How does this additional entity of the Anchorage Police Department being in, down here, as well as potentially having troopers along the highway, because we also have it's Seward's big weekend too?
Well, split here, one thing about the trooper would be out there very much, we A and D, and an advanced force out on Seward Highway. I am in support of two, two officers down here for traffic control within the community, because they're the ones that have the authority to do this particular impounding if necessary, or writing tickets if necessary, nobody else does, except Whittier. In fire discussions with Kyle, he's inclined to think, well, to think, Whittier doesn't want to do this, they weren't in the contract, that wasn't in the contract. And two, I conclude, conclude with Kyle, that the Whittier Police needs to be held in reserve for fights and the drugs and this kind of stuff, instead of chasing cars. I don't know if that answers your question.
It does, thanks, Mike.
But last year, during the, the event, the command was, the fire department brought down, worked rather well, they distributed the radios for private security for forest fair, which we are upping the number of private security, because I can't depend on the volunteers. And there are some other things that have worked on the more tomorrow, we have, about the details of possibly having a manpower system, they allow the state defense force, a military organization with their own vehicles, I like the National Guard down here to help with traffic control. They have no authority, if they will do it, they have no authority to ticket, impound, or arrest, that they will help us in the campground, if they can do it, if they're doing it. They advocate an interest drive event tomorrow, which would facilitate the manpower asset.
Okay, now that I've got the incident command understood, and I understand people's roles and responsibilities, and servicing everyone, and the needs that this community has, my next question is the practical application. Yeah, you got enforcement, tow trucks, traffic, getting, are we really going to tow that many vehicles in and out of here efficiently? Is it even going to be worth it?
Well, that's the question, and my understanding is, you had talked to me about maybe having Greatland to have a few flatbeds?
So, Turnigan Towing will have one flatbed and one wrecker down here during the fair. They can impound, but that's driving to Anchorage and coming back on a busy traffic day. So, if it's a really bad traffic day and we want them to go back-to-back, then we will be without a tow truck for hours. However, the solution we had last year was, they would impound the vehicle, give the owner a few minutes to show up, and get it out of the chief's way, and then they'd pay a drop fee instead, because it hadn't made it to the impound yard.
And how much are the tickets for parking in front of a fire hydrant?
Uh, no one was issuing tickets the last enlargement we had, so it's under municipal code and, and state statute for parking in front of a fire hydrant, you're supposed to not park within 15 feet, there were 10 blocked at the recent-
Yes, but cost?
I truly do not know the cost, because I'm not the, I don't have the ability to-
Understood, understood.
So, James, you had a comment?
I just had a recommendation that maybe prevention is sort of an idea here, you know, and, and community awareness and in the parking, and possibly barricading 300 feet on either side of hydrants. And sort of that acknowledgement on the problem roads like Garnish and Aliaska View, the ones that are really tight, and maybe taking that approach, I mean, I realize, you know, it's good to have officers around, I sort of feel that's a, you know, a good way of letting people know, don't park here, but I think there's a big part in how can you move the vehicles, even if they do, and I think it's through awareness and, and, you know, making sure people know that this isn't an area where you can park.
So, my comment next would be, if we were to hire these two APD officers to come down and enforce parking, how are we going to coordinate what they're going to enforce? Is that something you would be willing to?
Sure, because we did it last year, last year we did, which was when, when all the streets clogged up last year, when we ran out of parking, right? And we had four hours of traffic couldn't move anywhere in the community, and it backed up to Indian, nobody could come in, nobody could come out, remember that time period?
Well, I know that time period, but we're talking parking, because there's two different issues. One is when the traffic backs up to the highway. And the hope this year is that the DOT signs, and keep, they're going to keep the traffic moving faster, and hopefully we won't have cars-
Yeah, because the, because the other thing is, you know, when, when DOT's less their hearts, make the road smaller, and we have high fire danger, if I ever had to evacuate the community, I couldn't do it when it takes an hour to get from sorrow up to here, when there's 8,000 people in town, right? So, hopefully people will start to move out when they saw a big cloud, right? Hopefully that'll never happen, because we live in a rainforest, but, you know, we used to be, when the road was wider, Aliaska Highway was wider, people could move off to the side whenever two vehicles go past, down with a limited shoulder, there's just a narrow lane, right? So, it's just a matter of, we're just rolling the dice.
So, but with the parking, if we hired two APD officers, how are we going to tell them what we want them to do? Is that something that you could help, Kyle?
Well, the way I see it planned out is that what we're addressing, the reason we've gone to this APD option is that we had an egress problem last year. And so, to find a solution to this, and this is not tied to permitting, this is a, this is a recommendation that came from a letter of support from the fire department that said, "You should address these issues." And so, we brought this as a solution. It's maybe not the final solution, but we brought us a solution to say, "We need people who are more focused on parking enforcement." We have not reached agreement with Whittier on that aspect, and so, we needed somebody who could enforce municipal codes. And so, they were brought in as an option to have, because you can't bring, actually the parking authority, the parking authority in town only has the downtown area, everything else outside of it is APD. So, we brought two, this option of two APD officers in to do that. Now, if we were to elect to do that, we would probably depend on Chief Weston and her personnel to say, "We've got an issue on this street at this point in time, can you come address it?" They would make that complaint through dispatch, through a probably non-emergency call to Whittier Dispatch, and then Whittier would probably relay it to APD and say, "Hey, can you go address this issue at this location?" And so, there needs to be, it needs to be cowlogged and recorded, so that if the car does get towed, there's been a process to identify why the car was towed, and it protects Whittier and APD in the long run. And so, that's what it would happen, that is, I think if-
Okay, now the next- The other thing known about the towing thing, though, is with APD making the towing call, they have a rotational call list. So those calls will be coming from Anchorage, if APD is doing the tow and requesting the impound. It won't automatically go to Turnigan Towing. We have that here for festival towing. Stuff that happens out there has to go through the APD call list, so they'll be, and Turnigan Towing's not on that list. So they will be calling companies in Anchorage until someone accepts a tow from Girdwood to Anchorage.
Yeah.
But now, wait, 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 let's, just hold up a sec.
And then the other part is-
Just hold up a sec. So, maybe this isn't going to work.
Yeah. Well, it sounds like this is-
See, so-
So we accept the risk.
Plus, you have another point of contention. Signees, there's nothing on the side road saying you can't park there.
Right, correct, that's where it's at.
That's what, that's the next thing I was just about to- Well, and that's what, that's the next thing I was just about to address, is what are we going to do about signage?
Our little signs that the Forest Fair makes, those hand letters, aren't even advisory. Those are good natured. Regulatory signs are white and require to have certain sized letters and backgrounds. Advisory signs, which are yellow and say speed limit 30, but they're yellow, they're advisory. But the white signs are regulatory, you can write tickets on those. Our homemade signs, the APD will not write tickets on those.
Yep, so just one second. So, Chief, we're doing this so that you, because of your recommendation.
Right, but it's sounding like now that tow truck is going to be three hours.
Unless Kyle is requesting it for a safety reason, because we have that set up for impounds through all this other stuff. That's a little bit different, and that's what we did last year when they're blocking a fire hydrant, it was a safety and the muni rep or park rep was requesting that.
But it just sounds like it's not going to work. So, we just have to accept the risk that there could be an offer, you know, maybe it was a rain and we won't have an issue, right? So, we just have to accept that we all as current residents have to be helpful in, if you see cars and think, wow, no one can get down these streets anymore, maybe we could help. The signage thing doesn't work, and that was proven at the last large event, it didn't work. Because when all the parking in Gerwood filled up, people parked in all the streets and that one subdivision, and you could not get, you could get a suburban, I could get through with like an itch on either side, so.
And there were signs.
And there were signs. So, and I did, I blocked all my calls to Whittier PD, asking for people to be towed in those locations, there were stop signs for everything for afraid of hydrants, because they were so busy dealing with truck people, which is the way they should be, triaging, they weren't able to do that.
James, Kyle, do they have, what does the municipality do for the Iditarod downtown?
They require the event organizers to pay for additional officers and signage.
Okay.
But again, that's, because we're outside of the police, Anchorage Police Service area, we're not, we don't have, our Whittier Police serve as our police officers.
You know, I think we can ask to get APD to come down here and park. That argument, Tommy, if we could have a way.
We can, but it's, what I'm, what I'm trying to reiterate is that it's not, while it is part of the permitting process in Anchorage, it's not part of the permitting process outside the Anchorage Police Service area where we are. Our police down here sign off on the policing part and have.
So, Claire, you have a question?
Yeah, one comment. My mom lives downtown, and the Iditarod, races, they close off residential streets, local traffic. They put up a big thing, said you can't come in. I don't know if we can do that.
Jerry, since we've kind of moved to the solution part of the conversation, is there any way to get some area in the industrial park designated as a certified towing or staging area, putting down the duck pond so we don't have any environmental concerns or anything, so as to have a temporary local solution as opposed to the suicide run down the arm?
Just over 30 days until the fair goes, it's probably going to be impossible to pull off. I mean, because there's an environmental aspect about towing and impound yards and all those type of things, and so, and the other aspect is you have all these leaseholders down there with a lot of expensive equipment, and so, it's something trying to pull off in the next less than 45 days is quite difficult.
We'll put that in the bucket for next year.
If you'll give me 48 hours, I might have an answer. I mean, with the state defense force tomorrow, there's an option that was just presented to me a moment ago, that might be a viable option, but I don't know, and I'm not going to say until I talk to the brigadier or the state commander.
Well, we don't meet for this.
Before we do, I just want to point out things, the two things that I pointed out earlier that Forest Fair has done this year due to the issues we have last year. We have added those two buses for transportation from Anchorage to Gerwood, hoping to lessen the number of cars coming down. And we have also contracted out DOT certified road flaggers, which we have, you know, we've had our main flaggers in the middle be certified, but it's all been volunteer other than that. So, it's, it's a whole, we are taking steps to mitigate the issue. We are working towards it. It's just doing this at this point in the game, it's coming up quick.
I've got a question about capacity. So, you mentioned it's maybe 8,000, 10,000 visitors. How many parking spots do you actually have you contract with Alley O' Scott?
Michelle, you said you knew how big the parking day lodge is.
Well, Brian's here.
We have about 450 spots at the day lodge, and we have almost 400 spots over at the hotel.
Okay.
But we do not contract for the hotel.
Oh, last year.
People park at the school.
But in, so in terms of what you're actually contracting for, it's about 450 spots.
Yeah, depends if we, how many cars they put on the magic carpet lawn, and how far that the parking lot can park.
So, obviously, that's, that's very low if you're looking for attendance of 8,000 or, you know, if you're, I know you're not planning for attendance that size, it is what it is.
And the other issue with that is there's not other, very many other viable options for parking in this community. So, we've taken the biggest parking areas we can find, and we're working with those to supply as best parking as we can. We've added the buses to try to help with that, but it's still, we're a small town with limited options.
Jerry?
Yeah.
I appreciate everything that's being done. I recognize how hard it is to get volunteers to stand up, particularly for the security portion of the event. And as an age discriminator, as a beer garden, I understand how those shifts can go sometimes. That said, I'm just hesitant to put forth a solution that doesn't look like it's practicable and feasible and set a precedent that would be hard for any other potential future event to meet based on our lack of proximity to any of those resources that would help that.
Yeah, I kind of feel the opposite. I don't want to put it on Forest Fair, I'd rather have the resort started with a slushcup or something like that, but in the future, at some point with these events, if we're going to be clogging up and making it unsafe, we've got to come up with a solution.
Be great.
We can't just ignore it. We can't continue to ignore it.
And the solution was addressed in the resolution that was passed area-wide a year and a half ago.
But we can't do that this time, Tommy.
No.
You can keep saying that.
You guys have the, you have the authority to ticket down here, but you don't have anybody to carry out the authority.
You're correct.
Whittier might have contracted that responsibility for 140,000 plus. Hiring two APD officers at the height of the events would be a lot less expensive than what you were considering doing as part of your responsibility to the safety of the community. That's a balance.
See, the problem with hiring, here's the problem I see with hiring the two APD people is, what are they actually going to do?
Yeah.
First thing they're going to say is they need to have official signs. So, we talked about this earlier, Kyle could hire some outfit to bring signs down here, and that, we could bring signs down here and sign off these certain streets. And then, these APD people could somehow not allow people to park there. When the people park there, we don't have any way to tow them. We could ticket them, which, you know, if we had the APD guys going around, maybe there would be less people parking in the wrong spots.
So, something Forest Fair learned, similar to what you're saying, is having our tow truck sitting right out front here stopped the bad parking way faster than having someone actually knocking on windows and trying to find people, you know, just park the tow truck and say, you will be towed if you parked wrong. And people seem to understand that they shouldn't be parking.
APD vehicle with a dummy in it.
Well, APD wanted APD, maybe that would.
You know, maybe just having them here would, like, not eliminate, but lessen the people that are parking that. And you, it's, you know, it's something to look into with the contract signing with them, you know, what the towing setup is, because I don't know what it looks like when you hire them specifically, but normal APD parking, it is a rotational call.
And the Forest Fair at the meeting that I mentioned, Forest Fair volunteered to decorate or not block, but make the fire hydrants very, very visible. And we would be able to do that, put cones out, and we would take on that responsibility, but we cannot enforce parking or have our security.
Right, we understand that. So, what are we going to do about approving their permit? Are we going to approve it without a parking solution?
We don't approve their permit, they have a, they've asked us for a letter of non-objection.
Right, okay, what do we do about the letter of non-objection?
Who signs it? Is this the land use?
We have enter after.
We have a job to do inside.
But yeah.
Okay.
It would be the land use, I guess, would sign it.
Probably.
Mike, you have any solutions?
I don't have any solutions. I mean, we know there's a, we know there's a problem in scale here, you know, it's fundamentally that the community does not have the capacity to deal with the numbers we're attracting for several events. And there isn't a short-term fix to that, apart from, you know, put in a barrier to sorrow or something, and only letting certain people in. So, you know, we just, we do have this problem, we can hope it works, but it's, you know, in the hands of greater pals than me. The, I'm tempted, I think we have to sort of separate out these two issues. Permitting, the permitting issue is not, although we have concerns about community impact, that's not strictly under permitting requirements, so, and I don't want to stop the event.
Nobody wants to stop that.
Right, so I think, I think we can, I think we can separate out these two issues. We cannot object to the permit, but still bring, still comment on the fact we have an outside concern about parking, we can do that as an option or something else here.
The only thing I'd say to that is if we want to start setting a precedent where the public pays tax.
That's a different issue. I'm not proposing we do that at the moment, I'm just saying we can, we can address the permitting issue separately from the parking and the community issue, they're different things.
But if we say, okay, we'll accept the permit, okay, the letter of non-objection, and now we want to go back and want to say, okay, Forest Fair, we'd like you to pay for two APD officers to come down here.
Then we're in the same position as if it was slush cup.
And they'd say, and they'd say, no, we're not going to do that.
They're the same as with slush cup. We have no way of enforcing that either, we have no leave bridge in other cases, except that, except that these groups are good community members.
But I mean, we do have some leverage if we don't approve the letter of non-objection.
But I see them as separate issues.
With, actually with slush cup, you do have leverage, because they have to file for a special, Alley O' Scott Resort has to file for a special alcohol permit, don't you, each year, which has to go through the police chief. And so, if the police chief through the board is having strong concerns, that police chief can hold off on signing that alcohol permit until the dress, the parking is addressed. I just want to make sure that we're factual on that aspect.
So, this is kind of slush.
But with this, with the permit right now, and I haven't seen the final AFD operational permit, but the letter we've received from Chief Weston, it's not a requirement of Gerwood Fire Department to give support for this if they get this parking enforcement figured out. It's a suggestion from the fire department to deal with it because it's a major concern of theirs. But we're, as the person who writes the permit, right now, I've gotten a letter of support from Gerwood Fire, so we finished that mark, we marked that box, and we're moving on. So, right now, what's in front of us is this loan. But we are trying to address that concern, the fire department, by bringing in APD to help with this enforcement.
And two smaller things that we've done, like I said before, are the bus and the deal, like, we've done small things to address that, and this would be the next big thing, and it may be something.
And I think the solution that they brought forward tonight is they would go out and mark all the fire hydrants. I think that would be a very positive solution, and in the short term, that's something we can actually accomplish, and they do better planning for 2020, and see how 2019 goes, but do better planning for 2020. The thing I don't like about this whole scenario right now is that we're 45 days away from it, and we're dealing with this problem, and I feel like we're going to throw a horseshoe of a solution in there, and it's going to be a waste of taxpayer dollars in the end. Because that's where I see it going, because Forest Fair is being very adamant right now, they don't want to pay for it, and so, it's going to be thrown back on taxpayers, which then sets a precedent for the community that when we have the extreme triathlon, slush cup, that's all going back on the taxpayers to fund these private events that are going on and take care of their, the parking problems that the events create. Because if the Forest Fair wasn't going on that weekend, we wouldn't have a parking problem right now, so that's very clear.
It's clear what's causing the parking problem.
Exactly.
I mean, I also don't agree that by making decisions in this single case, we're setting a precedent, because we're not going to have the same event in, you know, in a slush cup time in April next year or April.
I would also like to say that, you know, discussion about signage, like, was brought up, that we don't have proper signage to enforce parking and all that kind of stuff. Once again, we're in that 45-day period, you know? It's something that we can definitely look at, talk about, figure out, and plan more for next year, but to decide something tonight, I feel like we're rushing into something that we don't necessarily know how it's going to play out.
So, Chief, you're okay if we don't hire the APD guy?
It's my professional responsibility to tell you of the risk, and then as lawmakers, it's your decision to take that information. So, yes, I'm okay with that.
Policy, policy.
Yeah.
Well, let's say we approve the letter of non-objection this evening, and then let's say that we're going to continue discussion with the Forest Fair committee on parking, and what we're going to do with parking, and whether we can still try to hire APD at the last minute if we want, doesn't seem like a very good solution to us tonight, or we can try, Mike might have other solutions, we could try other solutions. But whatever you could come up with, that you could.
So, we have a meeting this Thursday, so I can go to the committee and say we need to look at more parking help situations, let them know that you guys like the idea of marking the fire hydrants with the cones that we get for barricades, so we can do that, and.
And we're very thankful for all the other stuff you do, the buses and the flaggers and, you know, having the tow trucks and.
And then we can come back and discuss it more and get into more detail about what the plan would be. But I feel like right now, there's not really a plan, there's not an executable.
The one, one thing that, you know, that will happen though, is if we ever did have an accident where they couldn't get somewhere, that would be a disaster for future Forest Fairs.
It'd be a disaster for our community.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Also, keep in mind that if you elect to go with APD, go that route, that if it rains, then we don't have a problem.
Right.
Jerry?
But Jerry, keep talking.
Barbara?
I've observed the Forest Fair move forward with a bunch of great new ideas with regard to recycling and not allowing people to sell bottled water and bottled, you know, you've moved forward in some really fantastic ways that have eliminated trash and all the rest of that. I think that as we look forward, you know, you have this bus that's going to be coming down, that's awesome, but this year, it's probably not going to take off. But I think that, you know, putting this into the plan for the future and saying, okay, you know, in 2020, it's going to cost you 20 bucks to park at the day lodge, or, you know, some kind of way to encourage people to think about carpooling, and, I mean, you can wrap it all up in the same green approach, which it really does fundamentally come down to as well.
I will have to give Brian props on the bus thing, it was kind of his idea, he's like, have a bus, charge people if they don't carpool, you know, that was stuff that he shot out to the committee last year, and we decided to go with the bus option.
Right, and so, but the only way that that will be successful for 2020 is if it starts to get communicated in 2019, because people will forget in that intervening year, and you guys are really fortunate in that you don't really need to do a lot of public interest or, you know, you don't have that campaign to say, hey, guess what, the Forest Fair is coming, because everybody already knows that it's coming, they're, they're habituated to it. But I do think that working on something, and then in 2020, you know, this conversation has a lot more teeth, and we hopefully can eliminate some of the just straight-up cars.
Mike?
I was just going to say, for the purpose of keeping this moving, I'd like to make
has a lot more teeth, and, and we hopefully can eliminate some of the just straight-up cars.
Mike?
I was just going to say, for the purpose of keeping this moving, I'd like to make a motion.
Yes.
That we, we write a letter of non-objection to the Forest Fair Department.
Second.
Okay, further discussion. We have a motion, and it's a letter of...
No objection.
Not, not objection for the permit. During, go for the comment, call for vote, all in favor. And please, do what you can. You always do a great job. And for the people out there, the Forest Fair website is open, and they're looking for volunteers.
Yes.
Always.
Hey, you know, Ty Lee, we could pave paradise and put up a parking lot. Thank you very much.
Okay, item agenda, LUC 190404, Gerwood Housing Working Group, and LUC Recommendation for GBS Resident Support for Changes to Title 21, Chapter 9, Regarding Accessory Dwelling Units. Mike Edgerton.
Right. So, actually, Carl, could you put the table there for me?
Yes.
So, we currently have, so a number of years ago, I don't, I can't remember how many, when Title 21, Chapter 9 was put in place, we had a set of rules for where accessory dwelling units could be, or what the criteria were for building accessory dwelling unit. So, this could be a modern law apartment that's attached to your house, it could be a separate structure, it could be an apartment above a garage, all sorts of things. In the intervening years, Anchorage had a look at their code and put in a number of improvements, which is kind of a more modern code, and we noticed that we'd sort of lag behind little bets, so we wanted to look at this, because this is an easy way of potentially encouraging some more housing development, sort of internal housing development. This is paid for by individuals who own a house, and they might want to put a second unit in. So, we took a look at the code, and there are a number of changes we're proposing. The one at the top, one of the bigger ones, is currently you can only build a detached ADU if your lot is large enough. Now, if your lot's 20, 20 feet too small, there's nothing you can do about it. You're just out of line. We decided, thinking about this, it makes more sense for the lot characteristics to decide whether you can have detached ADU. We still have to meet the setback requirements, you can still only do certain sizes, there's a bunch of other criteria you have to meet. Having an arbitrary number for your lot size doesn't make sense, so we've proposed removing that completely. That's the top line. So, a detached ADU, if it fits, if it meets the other criteria, could go on any lot. There used to be a minimum size of 300 square feet. There's a lot of people who'd, who are happy living in smaller things and tiny homes, so we removed that minimum. The maximum was probably a little small, given the nature of most recent development in Gerwood, so we've increased the maximum a bit, well, actually quite a bit, to 900 square feet. This was also motivated by a number of people who made comments that they would actually quite like to live in a small unit and then maybe rent out a larger unit. Maybe the, you know, the family has, has moved on, they're now in a, they're now in a home that's bigger than they need to. So, at least seasonally, they may want to live in a small home and rent out, live in a small unit and rent out the larger one. Parking, we've actually tightened up a little bit. We've just heard about parking during Forest Fair, obviously this is not about Forest Fair, this is the rest of it, but we don't want to, we don't want situations where you create a new unit and you, you end up with parking on side streets, because we really don't have good quality parking, good parking on side streets. We don't have good solution for that. So, what we've actually done is added another criteria, so if you have a two-bedroom ADU, you need two parking spots for that. If you have over 600 square feet, you have two parking spots. Other, other towns have actually lessed the parking requirements, but I don't think that's an appropriate solution for Gerwood. Technically, there are setbacks, there's a, there's a technical item in code that allows you, if you, to encroach your 10-foot setback on the side of your building, if you don't, if you give extra space on the other side. Since ADUs are smaller, that doesn't make sense in tall structures, so we've said that the flexibility goes where the tallest structures. There's some, a lot of code in there for bed and breakfast. We're kind of looking at the other issue of short-term rental. Bed and breakfast used to be a very special case, and there's a load of code in there for that. It's kind of been, I think we already have three bed and breakfasts left in Gerwood. We used to have about a dozen. Short-term rental has really taken that, taken that over, so we took that restriction out. We're looking at doing short-term rentals a different way. The last thing is, we wanted to make it really clear in code that we're not talking about adding dry cabins, we're talking about fully functioning homes, various sizes, so we require utilities. The thing that didn't make the list, but we discussed and voted on at our housing working group on last Wednesday, was a sort of height restriction. So, in general, within Gerwood, you can build up to 35 feet height. That doesn't mean the tallest part of the building, that means the average of the roof. So, I'm sure David will confirm, but a 35-foot tall building could include a 70-foot A-frame, because it's the average of the top and bottom. So, you know, for a 70-foot building, if it's an A-frame, the bottom's ground level, the top's 70 feet, it undercode as 35 feet tall. So, we went through some, we did some simple math and came up with a decent-sized, 900 square foot, so a maximum-sized apartment, sitting on top of a garage, an all-size garage or a double garage, with a very steep roof, would fit within a 25-foot building height as calculated. So, we actually proposed that detached ADUs would have a maximum height of 25 feet. That didn't make it onto this table, because we only, we officially added that last week, but we have been discussing it for a while. There are other restrictions in code which stay. There's a requirement that you have to be owner occupier of one of the units on the, on the lot. That stays. We had to make that change, and there's a few other bits and pieces, which I don't remember. Any questions?
The side setback, not greater than 15-foot structures, that's to the average height of the roof.
That would be the same measurement. So, if the same building, like, we have, we're using this language here, but the, we use the phrase "building height," which I believe is the term that's defined. So, in that case, it's your, it's your turn to say something.
Oh, my turn to say something? Well, I would entertain a resolution, and there is a, no, there is a resolution of support for this, or a packet, and I would, I can't read it into the record, so I need somebody else to read it into the record.
I wrote it, so I'll have to read it. It's my punishment. Actually...
Do you need me to support it before we read it into the record?
Are we discussing this as a...
Okay.
Well, if we read this in as a, as effectively a motion, then we will pass this resolution. Resolution 2019-08 of the Gerwood Board of Supervisors. Resolution of Support for Amendment to AMC 21.09.050C2 relating to accessory dwelling units, ADUs. Whereas lack of housing has been identified by the community of Gerwood as a primary area of concern, and whereas the Gerwood Land Use Committee created a work with Housing Working Group tasked with finding solutions to propose and help alleviate the housing shortage in the community, and whereas the Gerwood Housing Working Group has been meeting, studying the issue, and setting a course of several possible actions to help with the housing shortage since September 2018, and whereas one of the solutions is to remove restrictions on legal performing accessory dwelling units intended to both make existing ADUs legal and to encourage homeowners to create more housing, and whereas the Gerwood Housing Group has modeled the proposed changes in part on similar code changes that have been approved in other parts of Title 21, and whereas the proposed changes have been presented to the Gerwood Land Use Committee, which voted 11 to 0 in favor of recommendation to the GBUS to write a resolution of support for the proposed amendments to Title 21, Chapter 9, relating to accessory dwelling units, therefore be resolved, the Gerwood Board of Supervisors supports the proposed amendment to AMC 21.09.050C2, passed and approved by the Gerwood Board of Supervisors on the 20th day of May 2019.
Looking for a second?
Second.
Okay, further discussion, and I'll start. I want to thank Mike for all the work he's done on this. He's worked hard on this to get all this information together. We're trying to make it easier to get more housing units in Gerwood, and he's working to find solutions, and I appreciate his effort to do that. I think this is a good start.
It is just a start.
Yes. That's my comment.
I second your comment.
Any other comments? Any comments from the public? During that, I'll call for a vote, all those in favor of the resolution. Thanks again, Mike. Next up, review of PSAC Recommendation to Whittier Police Department for Police Services Contractor for Contract Period of Three Years Plus Two One-Year Extensions. And in our packet, we have a cost breakdown, I think, that we were given, summary from the current to the proposed. And tonight, we are looking to...
So, tonight, our request from the staff side is to have the board supervisors consider and approve the recommendation that was given, sent up from the Public Safety Advisory Committee, and to start and complete negotiations with Whittier to finalize a contract to start in 2020, January 1st, 2020.
What kind of approval do you need?
We need a motion to start that, and I would probably also ask you to designate Jerry, since he's the Public Safety Supervisor, to lead those negotiations, just as what Sam Daniel did during the original contract, and then report back to GBUS about the progress, and then ultimately, GBUS will approve the final written contract to send to Assembly for approval.
I'd like to make a motion to... To approve PSAC's recommendation regarding the Whittier contract and to appoint you, Jerry Fox, as the point of contact to report to GBUS on the progress of the negotiations.
Second.
Further discussion. I think, I'll make a comment, I think Whittier does a great job. And I thank you for your community policing, and I think it's worked out far better than anybody, at least in my estimate, than I thought it would when we first, when you first came in here. The one issue we're going to have is, of course, parking's not part of this, so we'll talk about that, but...
Well, it is part of it, but there's a rate to it.
Yeah, I know. There's a large rate to it. So, other than that, any other comments?
Yeah, I'd just second that and say that it's, it's not infrequent when policing comes up in the discussion, people will say, I voted against it, against raising tax, and I would change my vote if we had to do it again. So, I think if people actually want to tax themselves for it, that's a really big vote to come.
Okay, I guess we're going to vote on this motion? All in favor? Okay. Oh, this is a bad one. Consider the dates for the GBUS 2019 Budget Meeting, Budget Work Session 1, 2, 3, July, August to be determined, and approval, we'll try to get the approval of the budget, August 19th at the regular meeting, the nonprofit grant presentation sometime in August or September, approval of nonprofit grant allocation steadily slated for September 16th, regular meeting.
I defer to Margaret and her management of our schedules. You know what all the meetings are.
So, I, I, I know this isn't a very thrilling one for you, the deal with budgets in midsummer, but today I just received from OMB the budget schedule for 2020, and actually, the budgets for the service areas are due on the 16th. I put a request in for the 19th, which is your GBUS meeting at that time. And the reason we've made this change in the past is just to make us more efficient with our budgeting and to get ourselves set, so we're not doing so much heavy carrying into the late part of the year, and that we can address our budget quickly for first-quarter revisions when it comes for in January. The old tradition was to wait and do all budgets into the fall, and then try to work it into the first-quarter revision, but we always ran into problems. Well, now, we are more cognizant about our mill rate cap and where we are with our mill and not trying to hit that mill cap or get close to it. So, so that's why I push you to do it earlier in the year, so that we're more efficient with getting it taken care of in time for first-quarter revisions, if we have to make revisions.
Well, I should say, it's worked really well the last couple of years, I think. So, I agree, it's, when it's sunny outside, the last thing you want to do is sit in, sit in this room and discuss budgets, but...
And Margaret and I will try to keep it as painless as possible for you.
I was going to say, it's been very efficient, even when we were going through the complexity of the SAP transition, it still, it still worked well.
And so, from a schedule-wise, we don't expect you to make any confirmation on dates tonight, but we will work through with doodle pools to find these work sessions and get them set up, and what we try to do is at least one evening work session and then a mixture of evening or two midday lunchtime work sessions.
Okay, so we don't really have to...
No action tonight, but we're going to, we're going to push forward, and we want our budgets done by the 19th. So, that's what we're just saying.
Okay, new business. Item LUC 190504, introduction, a request for LUC Recommendation, GBUS Resident Support to Change Title 21, Chapter 9, Relating to Material Extraction in Zones, Area Zones, Gerwood Open Space, Michelle Nanty, Dave Woodfield.
Hi. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for, for having us. My name is Dave Woodfield. I'm with the Planning Department, current planning manager. With me is Sonic Calhoun, and we are here to just give you a brief overview of an ordinance the Planning Department is, is working on currently. Just to give you a brief history on this ordinance, about four months ago, the state came to us and inquired about permitting for what they call the Kern Site, which is right down here. They've got a state road project that could use material from that site. The site has been in existence for about 50 years, and they were wondering what municipal process they'd have to go through to, to achieve permitting to use that site. The Planning Department looked into their project and realized that the zoning, the underlying zoning of GOS did not, or Gerwood Open Space, did not allow for mineral extraction. So, we started looking into mineral extraction in the Chapter 9 regulations, and we recognized that four other districts, the GR2A, GI2, the GIP, and the GCR3 recognize state and federal mining claims that exist. Now, this ordinance that we're working on does not allow, does not open the book for new mining claims to be established, but rather recognizes the existing state and federal patents that exist, mainly for, for state road projects. As you can see here, they're all kind of centered along the Civil Highway or the Alaska Railroad, so they would be material sites that would be used for, for projects that concern the two modes of transportation. The, the two modifications that we're making are, one, to the, the GOS district and the, excuse me, the GDR district, which is the Gerwood Development Reserve District. When, in talking to the state, they were really concerned about the GOS, so I asked them for a map showing us their material sites that they have identified and have patented. They gave me this map, which obviously identified this site here as a GDR, so we included that, that language into the Chapter 9. I want to make it absolutely 100% clear, this is not opening the book to establish new material sites, but just to recognize those ones that already exist. We're going to take the same language that already exists in Chapter 9 of Title 21 and incorporate it into those two districts. We do have copies of the draft ordinance for anyone that wants to read them. I think they're back there, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Questions in the board first? Mike, if you have a question.
You're going to do so.
Mike, what happens if this doesn't, if the ordinance doesn't pass, if this doesn't change?
So, I, I would be reluctant to say, but it could end up in a lawsuit, and that's what we fear, that's what we're trying to avoid here, but I suspect that the state will take issue if we're unwilling to accept these patents that have existed for, in some cases, over 50 years.
The value of that rock is to both Department of Transportation as well as the Alaska Railroad. What does the Alaska Railroad as a stakeholder have to say about that change?
The Alaska Railroad has been involved in the, in the talks as well. They actually have used of some of the material that would be taken out of that Kern Site. They have a concern with safety, it's an avalanche area, and they want to remove that, that material so that they can create an area for which that snow would come down and not obstruct their tracks. So, they've been involved... So, they've been involved in the talks. They're very aware of the ordinance, and so I don't think they have any objections to it.
And to clarify, that's that incredibly narrow chute where the highway and the railroad are very near to each other on the way to Portage.
Right, right.
Okay. Jerry, I do have a public comment to read into the record when we're ready.
My question is, they've come before us with this safe proposal last year, I thought.
I think that was the actual, that was the actual line you dealt with.
That was from DNR.
Yeah, that was from the DNR.
When they tried to go here.
And they had a plan that, if I remember right, it was, you know, when they were going to do this, what kind of restrictions can we ask for when they're taking stuff out? In other words, keeping trees near the road, not taking all the vegetation out right in front, so it looks like an eyesore is a big pit.
So, DNR has a rather robust permitting process. They do put it out for public comment, so I would encourage the Girdwood Board of Supervisors to make comment on those applications, because they do tend to look very closely at those comments and take them into consideration. So, if the visual impacts of a site are of concern to the community, I would certainly put those comments in writing so that the DNR can consider them.
But this right now is just to fix...
This is a, to basically bring consistency throughout chapter 9 of the code. There are already four...
But is there any extraction planned at this time?
Well, that's the, kind of the impetus of this ordinance, is they wanted to mine that Kern Site, and they came to us and said, "What permitting process would we have to go through?" And we looked at it, and we said, "It's not currently allowed."
So, they want to mine it, but they haven't, there's not out for public comment or anything like that?
I think the, I think DNR may have it out for public comment. I don't think that we're going to get this ordinance done this year so that they can mine the site. So, it might be next year. It's probably not this year.
How many sites does it affect?
Looks like five sites, I believe.
All within kind of the same area?
Same general area, yeah.
One's right by that little lake back in there.
Starts here at this railroad mile 77, one of them.
Yeah, Pond 3 is his name.
One of the sites has actually already been mined in years past. It's where the wagon wheel trail drops you out down there, and so it's very obvious it was a pit at one point in time.
That's the one in the Development Reserve.
Correct.
For those in radio land, it's pink. I have one other question before you do.
Sure.
So, you say there are four other, four other zones that have this language in there. Do they all have patents as well, or would they?
Yes.
So, the search was just incomplete at that time?
So, there's, I hate to call it generic language, but it just recognized that some properties within those zoning districts have patent rights, and that for mineral extraction, and that we, the Miss Polly, are going to recognize those rights. So, we're basically taking the exact same language and putting it into the GOS and GDR.
And as you said, this is not, we're not going to start allowing you patents. This is just a legal license.
Absolutely not. All we're doing is recognizing those existing rights.
Do you want to read it into the record?
For the record, I have Brendan and Julie Raymond Yokobian sent me a notice today asking me to read in their comments in their absence. Forgive me, I don't have their P.O. box. They wanted to say that they are opposed to changing the language in title 21, chapter 9, relating to the material extraction in the area zone of Girdwood Open Space. We've actually submitted comments to DNR about the proposed work at the Kern Site, which remain unaddressed by DNR. This has been probably going on with six months of no response from them. Our comments were primarily about impacts to the scenic highway corridor and potential blasting impacts on our community and on the Beluga population. We did not realize the area was zoned Girdwood Open Space, or we would have commented to DNR on that aspect of it as well. Please consider these public comments and share them. Sounds like they'll be in future conversations. But now, recognizing that it's been through a municipal process where you've been looking at what the leases didn't, did not say, and what the other districts had, I recognize the non-response from DNR in the past six months. But I appreciate the comment about the public process for permitting, and that that's the obvious space to talk about best management practices and help craft the scope of work that would potentially mitigate some of those impacts, whether it be timing, when the Belugas are not migrating, or visual impacts.
Right.
That wouldn't be a detriment to the scenic highway.
Right. And as I understand it, I've looked at the DNR process, and it's pretty robust. I mean, there are some very specific requirements that an applicant has to meet. So, it's not as though it's, you know, just an easy process to get through, that you just find a way and it's done. It's difficult.
Where's the material going?
It'd be going to the superhighway project, yeah.
For the roadbed?
Correct, yeah.
And the bridge work along that area?
Right, right. I'm not sure exactly what portion of the road they're using that material, but it is to facilitate that project.
And do they intend on mining all five sites, or is it just to change the language so that they could?
No. So, when we identify, so this all came up through the Kern Site, but when we identified the problem, rather than trying to fix it for the one site, we looked at, we looked at the problem more comprehensively and decided that we should probably address it so that we don't, we're not back here next year dealing with the same thing or five years from now.
Brian? So, since the Alaska Railroad is involved, are they going to be granting right-of-ways across the track to access those sites?
I think, I think they already exist, yeah. That was, yeah.
So, the Alaska Railroad is going to be granting right-of-ways?
They have already.
They already have. Is that going to help improve access for the lots further south of, here, the far south lots down at Portage? And what impact does that have on us here in Girdwood as far as being able to access and cross the railroad tracks?
Are you referring to the privately-owned lots?
I'm referring to the privately-owned lots south there.
Yeah, I don't know what that would do for that, for those access to the lot.
So, then, with each of the five sites, is there going to be a right-of-way granted in each of those five sites?
It's not a public right-of-way. It would be, it would be a right-of-way that would be granted to the state from the railroad, vice versa. It would not be a public right-of-way.
That sucks.
Yeah, I'm sorry to say that.
Thank you.
Yeah, I remember when they came, the first one came up.
I mean, the railroad cuts us off from a lot of valuable access in this valley, and having some, having a dedicated crossing at that site, the furthest north site, would allow us some trail connectivity here in the valley, and also some other potential transportation solutions.
Yeah. You know what I've seen is that the railroad is pretty protective of their property.
They are, and so, and we're being pretty generous with our property to say, "Hey, go ahead, come on in and take the gravel, have a good time with it."
Well, they would say, and I'm not trying to...
I know.
I'm playing dead left just for a second, but they would say these rights already exist, and they've existed for a number of years.
They were here before we were...
So, yeah. Any other questions?
I would just say I have a hesitancy towards the one in pink, just if that's for Girdwood Development Reserve, and that's a good asset gravel, and if you desperately need gravel, I would like to see that be used in Girdwood, Portage.
Well, currently, in that district, you couldn't mine it.
Nobody could.
Nobody could. The state, nobody, private entities, not going to be able to sit there as it is today.
Unless an ordinance went through where something's granted permission.
Correct. And we're not proposing that. The only thing that we're proposing is to recognize the existing rights.
Okay, this is new business, so it'll come up next meeting.
If I could just say one quick closing point. Mike, thank you for working with us on ADUs. As the author of a lot of ordinances, I can tell you that it's a lot of work, and I can tell that you've put a lot of work into that, so thank you very much. Appreciate it.
And so, we're thanking Mike. We'll have to thank him again here.
Let's do another one.
Let's do another one. The Gen item LUC 190505, introduction, a request for Girdwood Board of Supervisors resolution of support for a change to the title 21, chapter 9, related to commercial parking requirements. Mike?
This one's slightly different. So, this task has been going on for a while. I think a couple of years ago, there was a intent to change title 21, chapter 9, to fix some of the issues with commercial onsite parking requirements. So, basically, the, again, I'm sure I'll be corrected if I misplace something, but we have exactly the same rules for commercial onsite parking as Midtown Anchorage does. In fact, the whole of Anchorage except for downtown. And I would argue that the character of Girdwood is very different from, you know, Midtown where REI is or was, and things like that. So, generally, a lot of commercial development has been planned, you go through the preplanning process, predevelopment process, and then hits this blockage 20 cups apartment. But to build something which is economically feasible with the smaller lots down here just runs up to the physical constraint that you have to have a certain amount of parking, and that squeezes and squeezes and squeezes the building sites until it's no longer economically viable. So, we, so this effort started a couple of years ago, but didn't get that far. So, we started up again late last year, or last year, I should say. And we approached it a different way, and said, "There's this existence proof that in the majority of commercial locations within Girdwood, the parking that currently exists is adequate. There are a few places where there are parking problems, very few. In general, there aren't. However, when you look at the code, the only reason these places exist is because they're grandfathered in from earlier codes. So, you do not have the amount of parking that the code requires, yet they have enough parking based on every single bay they have enough parking." So, clearly, the code has requirements which are too overest. So, we looked at the limited amount of data we can find on parking studies in Girdwood. There was one done just about, just under a year ago, a JAP Sprat, actually, so we took that, some of the data. We did a review of what we could, of literature, and some other plans, and partly due to the numbers we saw in JAP Sprat, we proposed, we proposed basically a scaling down of the current requirements. So, all the land uses, basically, we've said is one of three types. It's either a very visitor-focused, it's very local-focused, or it's a mix of the two. If it's visitor-focused, the current rules are probably okay. We don't actually know, but we're going to stick with the current rules as a conservative position. If it's mixed usage, like we consider restaurants, we have some numbers from that, and we actually calculated that peak use is about 30% less than our current code says. So, we chose 30% as the scaling factor, or a 30% reduction as the scaling factor for restaurants and other mixed-use properties. And for completely local use, so childcare is an example of this, office buildings probably as well, we would scale down by 50%. So, this, I think, reflects the nature of this community, that people are very active, they walk a lot, recycle a lot, they ski a lot. We also have free public transport. So, these scaling factors would apply to the standard rules now. Restaurants, we also noticed this anomaly, that outdoor space is rated the same way as indoor space, and you can't use outdoor space that often to eat. So, we scaled that down as well. There is a requirement that all parking has to be paved at the moment. Eagle River has a slight carve-out in Eagle River Code. They say that if it's more, if it's less than 20 spaces, it doesn't have to be paved. We've sort of, we bounced around a couple of ideas here, and decided that what we would, what we at least propose is that paving is not a requirement in any parking spots. This is partly due to issues of runoff and other aspects. We do require that if there is paving, there's a permeable barrier around the edge. Current rules say there's no parking in setbacks, and we're going to say there's no parking in the first 10 feet of setbacks. We would allow parking beyond that. And the last thing is landscaping, which, again, makes sense in some communities. Here, it tends to interfere with snow removal. So, our proposal is to remove the landscaping and media requirements in larger parking parks. And then the very final thing, as an acknowledgement that we have, you know, effectively free public transport to all commercial sites now, one of the pieces of code actually allows an additional 10% reduction or 15% reduction if you have certain public transit options. So, we've removed that as a way. You can't get an extra 10% because you've already discounted it effectively. So, that's the set of, that's the set of changes we've made. And we've generated spreadsheets of all the commercial properties in town, and when you use the current rules, only one would be legal. If you remove grandfathered rights, or say it's illegal under current code, there's one that would be legal under current code. With this set of, with this set of requirements, I think there's two which would cease to be legal. So, it flips it a bit from nearly everything being illegal to nearly everything being legal, which I think, again, matches our assumption that the existence proof, that we actually don't have a parking problem in most locations at the moment, and this code would reflect that. So, this is just the first reading.
Maybe it'll come up next time?
I have a question. Erin? Do you think this would change very much if something changed with our transit, local transit situation?
It would change, probably change a little bit. But, I mean, the majority of use is in public transport for most people. It's cycling and walking. I mean, there's, I think it's something like, nearly every commercial site, I think over 80%, the population lives within the park, and mostly within the heart of it. So, we're really not, it's not like other, even the very suburban parts of Anchorage, the majority of customers of the business do not live within a short distance. And here, at least if it's local business, they do, which is why we reflect that by the scaling factors that make one purpose.
Hopefully, you're not thinking of it locally.
Well, I hope not, but in the, it's ups and downs, right?
It's going up now.
It's going up now.
It's positive now. Financially viable, and the ladder ship's up.
So, this has to, we'll be, planning looks at this when we have a full proposal at some point as well. So, it goes through a full public process even once it's gone through the process.
So, yeah, we'll have this on the gen next time, and it'll go through planning after that.
Yeah.
Next up, Gen item LUC 190506, introduction of resolution of Girdwood Board of Supervisors resolution of support for dimensional variance, request 159 Aspen Mountain Road, Christian Seeling presenting.
Hello, Christian Seeling. Kind of bummed that we lost Dave and Sonic, because we've been dealing with them quite a bit. But this is, what you're looking at here is a property that we bought four years ago. This is the as-built, as it was at that time. There were two buildings on the property with the Alaska Creek, with the kind of landscape of the resort, you know, past the Jade Shop and on down to the neighborhood. Show them there, you know, a bridge. We're currently living in the one, the bottom of the house there. Both that one was built in the 60s, you know, the 60s or something. We think it survived there. The other one was built in the early 80s before any kind of Girdwood, I'm sorry, muni-zoning was applied to the valley here. It's going to kind of need a little bit of explanation. This is a two-story, that's what that's trying to say, two-story house. The inner circle there is kind of the first floor. Off on the left there is these stairs that kind of came, you know, there's some stairs just to get up to the front door, and then to get up to the second story, you went up these stairs. And then this is cantilevered out and closed, and that is just 2.2 or 2 feet 2 inches from the side yard, or from our property line. Then, so then you came up the stairs, you turned around, and you walked into the second story here, or you walked out the door onto this deck that kind of wrapped around. This is, it was 20 feet or 30 feet away from the front boundary. And so, we talked to the municipality, and they said we could rebuild it 10% per year. This was, you know, again, four years ago, but they said that they could not support our request for a variance at that time because it was too close to the creek and because it was too close to the side area. Well, since last fall, they passed a new ordinance. Well, since last fall, they passed a new ordinance that, that allows for people in my situation who have a kind of grandfathered house that was too close to the creek to be rebuilt. But I didn't know that was coming at the time and, you know, so we started to kind of get into it. The building was already leaning over, both buildings you can't play marbles in or you couldn't play. This building is now torn down and is, we put in a new foundation that in the exact same location as the, this portion here without these cantilevers. And then we extended it 10 feet away from the creek. So we were still not into our front yard setback for now. I guess now might be a good time to switch to our, our current as-built. This is a concrete block foundation that we put in and so again, this part of it is exactly in the same location as the old one, but now instead of being 30 feet away, we're 21 feet away from, from the front yard. This is my, Jessica, she might have some comments at the, also, but, so, yeah, so we got into this project, we've, you know, it was leaning over, it was difficult constraints. We ended up finding black mold in the walls as we tried to kind of go on to the 10% deal and it just seemed like more, anyway, we tore it down. We lost our grandfather rights. We got a stop work order after we got this foundation in. That was almost three years ago. We have three little kids, this isn't the only thing we do. But anyway, here we are, we're applying for eventual variance to finish building this, this property, you know? We bought this property, these are old structures, we're trying to improve what, what's there. After we, you know, improve this building, we'd like to improve the bridge and then we'd like to improve this, this structure as well. So we, meeting with Dave and Sonnet Calhoun earlier, they agreed to give us administrative waiver if we would cut off one foot. So, so now, you know, we have four, we're four feet away from the side unit. I'm sorry, it's not, not shown here and it will be before your next meeting, but, so we are, we've changed that larger deck cantilever here to just a two-foot cantilever. We've totally eliminated it from this side. So right about here, there's going to be a two-foot cantilever out on the second story. And then back here, we'd like to have just a small deck that comes out, out of the second So we feel that had we moved forward this product, with this project under the, the current ordinance, that it would have been allowed, we wouldn't have lost our grandfather rights. We're actually moving farther away from the side border and farther away from the creek. But that doesn't help us now because all we have is this foundation in the ground. We currently have this kind of green quonset hut that's covering the foundation because there is water and sewer to here, there, there had been the whole time. So, yeah.
Looking for support.
Yeah. This is our introductory, we're trying to give everyone public comment, time to, to look at it and, yeah, I'm open to questions and...
So you took down the old place.
Right.
And that was the problem. If you hadn't made that down, in the new ordinance, you could have probably been...
The new ordinance, as long as the, the, the new structure is further away from things, then you would be allowed to tear it down, but...
You're fighting, what you want to do on that place that says garage, do you want to build a house?
It would be a, a garage downstairs with like a one-bedroom place upstairs.
And then you might look out the next one in the future.
Right, right. So we...
That's a plenty different issue, you're only looking for...
Well, I mean, we'd love to wrap it all up, but our brains are only so big and we just can't take, tackle it all. It's been hard for us just to even tackle this first phase, so we're just trying to tackle that one.
So to give a little summary of where they're at, they, they have one foot, so what happens with these side yard setbacks is that you can subtract from one side to another, but you're limited. And so right now, they're at four feet and the minimum that you can have in the side yard setback that you build, build into is five feet. And, and that means on the other side of the yard, they'll add, add five more feet on. You know, these side yard setbacks are put in to help protect sort of the buffer between properties so that property owners aren't building right on your, like your next-door neighbors like building on you. So they give a little room for variance in these things through code. And so basically what they're going through is a variance process to say, and say that we want that extra one foot because of this reason. And they do have a great argument because there used to be a storied building and they're in that aspect. And what it sounds like you heard today from planning is that you could avoid that variance process if you cut off that one foot and move forward. You don't have to go through all these steps, but you want to maintain this one foot, which is understandable because you have a foundation there and you don't want to go back and redo that foundation.
We're fighting for every inch, you know, to have a functional, this is still just 25 feet by 26 feet, which is about as small as you can get and still have a functional one-bedroom with, with stairs above it. And, and yeah, thank you Kyle for, for clarifying that. So this is a large enough lot, it's a little bit larger than usual. It's zone GR2 for, for duplex. And with the size of that lot, they will allow you to shrink your, what these dashed lines represent, 10-foot...
Setbacks.
Side setbacks. But with this lot, they, the muni will allow you to shrink one side to five feet if you will increase the other side to 15 feet. He also reminded me of some other talking points on this is that, you know, that, that building was put there for a purpose, you know, or for, for a reason. This area is, is one of the highest lots, highest areas of our, of our lot. It's above the 500-year flood plain, the banks on this, this stream are very steep and actually all drainage around the building goes towards the road, even though we are quite close. I mean, that's another thing that we'll have for you in the, in the next meeting is a distance from here to the creek.
Christian? That's me, over here.
Yes.
Full disclosure, I tried to buy this property before you.
Right.
So I did extensive due diligence and as an environmental permitter, who knows how much that Corps of Engineer Bridge is going to cost to? I can tell you that the history is, is that second building went in because the building that was cantilevered burned.
The building that was cantilevered?
The, the second building down here on the bottom of the drawing...
...was moving in right now.
Burned.
Uh-huh.
And what, so they built that one as a quick, like little, I gotta live somewhere, while they rebuilt the one that you're currently living in.
Right.
And then they opted to rent them both out. So just a little bit of detailed history for you as to why that one is there on that higher piece of property.
Well, right, they built it on, they built it there because it's on, it's higher.
Yeah.
Right.
And at the time, the setbacks were completely different as were the dimensions of the water lines and the sewer lines to quickly put those in and allow them to do that.
Right, right.
Is there a house on the lot next to it?
There, there are houses on each, each side of us. We have the support from our neighbors on, on each side of us and we're trying to drum up more, more neighborhood support from us, yes?
Can I make a count about the one that we share that property line with? They have a house that's...
It's all across the...
They're, they're, they have a duplex and yeah, their house actually goes over the creek.
And they have a lot of water issues.
It's actually in full support.
It's good if you, if Brian and John let us support your neighbors.
Right, yeah. Yeah.
So this, this variance isn't different from other variances that we've seen. We have the, have property up on Cortina that had, had built too much into the front setback and the property owner was granted the house from their parents and so we went through that variance and they were approved. There was a variance just most recently on Fernie, which the property is shaped like a kidney beans, one of the most unique properties in the, in muni. And so there was a lot of variances almost in every corner of the house that had to be dealt with, so. So these type of things we see come through and I think what's going to happen at this point, they've made their initial presentation, they're working with planning right now and at some point, a date will be set with P and Z for this variance to be reviewed. And before that, we will receive a packet and we'll invite them back for old business. At that point in time, we'll present the packet, you'll be able to see probably what the final thing is and then both land use and GPOS will give an opportunity to make a vote on it.
So they don't need to ask for their, for the...
No, you won't wait till the packet comes in. It's very similar to the way Marco works, when Marco comes and presents a project and then we wait for the packet to come in and Marco comes back and presents the project again.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Yeah.
I remember when we had that Oscar go through when the cyclone went through and all the water went through and boy, there was a lot of water going down that creek. Holy moly. Redman was up there with his hole right at the road there, keeping it open. Okay, next up, discussion of agenda topics for GPOS LUC biannual meeting, June 17. Do we have anything, Margaret, yet?
I'm not aware of anything.
Do you have anything, Brian?
I don't.
This is, you know, we had, we used to have quarterly, then we went biannually, but if we don't have anything, I wanted to cancel.
I think that it would be, I think that it's going to be a sunny night out too. It's definitely...
Aren't we required to have to?
Unless you don't have anything.
Yeah.
We have, we have required or at least petition for two meetings and if there's nothing to meet about, then...
And I think that, I think that...
You could always know.
When topics do come up, we've still got six more months to cram two meetings.
Right.
So...
We can still hold a meeting with our quorum.
What I would suggest is that we look at canceling this meeting unless the LUC comes up with topics at their next meeting before our meeting in June and get it out right away that you have something you want to discuss, but if you're okay with that?
I, yeah, I don't see anything on the horizon.
I think the way to, the way to do it is we're pretty, we're, we're sort of acknowledging that if LUC, LUC can effectively cancel a meeting if they don't have anything in the next, yes. But the action would have to be done then.
LUC needs to cancel it if it's going to be canceled.
We're saying that's acceptable.
It's a good way to put it.
I can work on that.
Discuss agenda item topics for Gerwood Fire Rescue, Gerwood Board of Supervisors, biannual joint meeting. This is tentatively scheduled for July 15. The fire board of directors are not sure they could have a quorum for that date. So we're still working on the board of directors for the fire department. One of the things on that agenda here is AFD contract negotiations. Another thing would be the fire department budget. And another thing on the agenda would be just again, looking at the structure and kind of reaffirming the structure of the fire board of directors and the structure we have today because there are some people on the board of directors who have a question about the structure of the, that they are working under.
Okay. And I know that AFD just finished their contract, new contract with Chugiak Fire Department and so that's actually, and they're very eager to get started on the Gerwood Fire. And so I met with Michelle last week and, you know, we've invested in something that's been on our list forever, so it's good. And it's nice to actually see the Chugiak one, we can see what they figured out, use that going forward on the Gerwood Fire one.
And there is a board of directors meeting around June...
June, I have it here. 13.
13.
At 7:00.
At 7 o'clock and public, but we will maybe add some work to that and look at the timing.
So I don't really think that that July 15 date is going to work, but I didn't want to remove it totally, but I think that date really, a date needs to get set at the fire board of directors meeting, something that they will confirm that they can attend and then we'll figure it out.
You say there might not be a quorum on, on July 15. Would changing the dates between the LUC joint and the, and the fire joint make any sense at all whether the, would that accommodate schedules any better?
No, LUC is the 17th of June. We're talking about the 15th of July.
Right, but, but what you're saying is yes, what I, yes, you're correct. I believe, because I know Ben will not be there in July and somebody else will not be there in July, but they're going to be there...
In June.
In June on the...
Why don't we just swap it?
Sure.
We can try.
We'll try.
I don't know. I think that they wanted to hold their meeting and have some time to, to work on whatever it is that they came up with, but honestly, I, I'm not sure. So you guide me, I'll, I'll go.
Okay. We will keep that flexible. I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
I see.
Yeah.